All right, everybody. If you can grab a seat, we're going to go ahead and get started. So it's 6:01. Welcome to the August 4th Regional Planning Commission meeting. We'll start off with a roll call. Can we get a roll call, please?
Rob Pierce.
President.
Marilyn Kramer.
Here.
Michael Flick.
Here.
David Jackaman.
Here.
Carrie Rorimer.
Here.
Carl Naverline.
Here.
Dan Lesereski.
Here.
Shelley Reed.
Here.
And Alex Velto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful. All right, if you all please join us in saluting the flag. Great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda. I don't have any changes, and I haven't heard of any changes. Can we get an approval to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and open up public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have quite a bit for this item.
Okay. I just want to make one comment. Ladies and gentlemen, we've got a lot on the docket tonight. So if you hear somebody saying something that you wanted to say, just say, "I concur with whoever," so we don't have to hear the same things over and over again. Just try to keep it, you know, professional and short. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you.
And I could be the knight. Good evening, board members, staff, and fellow citizens. You now know my name, advocate for a livable future for our children and grandchildren. I'm also a bit annoyed to be here tonight to speak, and Ford Lobby's switch proposal is not just absurd, it's a knife in the heart of our future viability as a sustainable As an urgent housing shortage has now morphed into a new vision for a mostly industrial development, including 250 acres. Has been solved. Cavernous dozen people each, while consuming up to a million gallons of water per day, back the 92% 67 acres to be used and open space, something that would help alleviate our housing crisis. Fact, after taxpayers built an elementary school in anticipation of this planned housing community, housing and open percent. Fact, in its place, Stonegate now wants to increase it to 50 acres noted by suitable amounts of water from the air with magic taxpayers to expect the price of our scarce water resources to consumers consume the lion's share of it. That was a trick question. And when we inevitably run low on water, who leaves first? The people here now or the data centers that aren't? As I stated earlier, this defies common sense and even sanity. Please vote against this dystopian proposal. Stonegate can make enough money helping solve our housing crisis, which is why they were approved in the first place. The last thing we need is for them to deliberately create a monumental water crisis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm not used to sitting, so this is a new one for me. My name is Wendy Baroli. I am a Washoe County resident, and I also own a ranch right at the edge of Stonegate on the backside of Peavine, and am deeply familiar. I think that I will use my general public comment to discuss the providence of how we got to here. As Mr. Miller said, it's been a 10-year project, but it was even before that, because prior to the housing development request, they tried to do an in-run with Washoe County, when it was still in the purview of Washoe County, and take it to the state legislature and make it into a super pad. And if you guys would like to take a look at that, the legislature said, "No, you need to go back to the people who live in the region, and you need to go through the process. You are not going to make it a super pad. We're not going to allow you to make an in-run through the state legislature to turn it into a super pad." So then they came back with this fabulous plan, and we spent, I am not kidding you, months of public comment, public meetings, seeing beautiful posters. And the best part about this is the Internet doesn't lie, and it doesn't disappear. All you have to do is pull up stonlegate.com, and you can see what a beautiful project they sold to all of us. They sold us open trails. They promised that the trees that they cut down that had raptors nesting bald eagles in it would be replaced with even more landscape. They promised the region that even though they were going to build 5,000 houses, they would help mitigate that stuff over a course of a build-out time. Now we are here today, and now they're not only asking for a reduction in their housing, but they are creating an environment in which not only will we deal with shortage of water that already exists, they had a very difficult time proving their water rights there already. And then, secondly, the amount of energy that a data center provides. And their argument that a data center, we need to compete with Story County. The city of Reno and Washoe County do not need to compete with Story County for data centers. We have a place for that, where there's water, where there are resources, and there's already infrastructure out there for that kind of thing. Not where, as you all know, are our regional development for housing. That's what the North Valleys was set up for. That's what we have to live with. That's every master plan decision, and it certainly doesn't follow any of the things that the city of Reno promised us that they would do, and that's a reduction of 20% of energy usage for industrial buildings to move towards green energy. So I'd like to tell you that, right now, this has got to be one of the worst boondoggles ever, and they're just trying to do another in-run.
I will keep this short, because I think the people ahead of me more or less said what I felt. I think it's a bait-and-switch kind of a situation.
Ma'am, will you please state your name for the record?
Oh, Janet Nelson, sorry. And good evening to you all. Oh, I forgot that. Anyway, in my opinion, I think data centers should not even be in Washoe County or even in Nevada for that matter, unless they can demonstrate at least a 70% more water efficiency, or they will literally drain us dry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Barry Levinson. I'm a Reno resident, and I'm a retired physician and chemical engineer, and a volunteer with Sierra Club. I'm speaking today in opposition to the proposed zoning change for the Stonegate development. The Stonegate developers are seeking to dramatically shift land use from primarily residential and commercial to industrial. Although we don't know exactly what industries are planned for this space, the developers have indicated that at least 15% of the land will be used for data centers. If you do the math, that's over 250 acres. For comparison, the web data center is 87,000 square feet, which is about two acres. 250 acres is therefore enough land for over 100 web data centers. That's a lot of data centers. As we all know, data centers consume a huge amount of cooling water. If the city of Reno allows development of even this 250 acres of data centers at Stonegate, the impacts on water will be tremendous. Currently, the Great Basin Water Company has 314 acre-feet of water available. According to the TMRPA staff evaluation, this proposal will require 1,008 acre-feet, which does not even account for potential data centers, according to Dr. Smith in the last meeting. So the water requirements will likely be far greater. And the proposal comes amid an ongoing hydrological study of the Cold Springs Basin, a region already impacted by drought and sewage issues. Sierra Club feels that approving industrial expansion now, before this study is completed, would be premature and irresponsible. Data centers will also cause significant air pollution from diesel generators, including particulate matter and toxic chemicals. These pollutants have been proven to contribute to increased rates of asthma, cancer, and cardiac disease in the local population. Data centers will also cause light pollution from bright nighttime lighting and significant noise from cooling fans and generators. As you may know, at this point in time, the city of Reno does not have a specific ordinance governing the approval of data centers. This means that developers have virtual free rein to get approval for their projects without regard to their environmental and health impacts. This is a serious problem. If this rezoning proposal goes through, we will be at serious risk of many new data centers coming to our area without adequate guide rails to protect our resources and our population. In summary, please vote no on the Stonegate rezoning proposal, which will open up a huge tract of land for potential data center development. This will put a strain on water in the basin and add air pollution and noise that will adversely affect residents and the ecology of the area for years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Michelle Claussen. I'm a fifth-generation Nevada and a 15-year resident of Cold Springs. As a former tractor-trailer driver who drove locally in Reno Sparks, I am very concerned of the impact that the proposed warehouses and semi-traffic will have on our quality of life, not just for the Cold Springs residents, but for everyone who lives in the North Valleys and along the 395 corridor. I could not find any estimates of the number of semis expected to service the proposed warehouses, but whether it's 40 or 400, it will change the entire traffic situation of our area. My first concern is, will our outdated narrow two-lane frontage roads on either side of Way Lake and the narrow tiny overpass that connects Exit 80 over 395 be able to withstand the constant barrage of tractor-trailers weighing anywhere from 25,000 to 110,000 pounds 24 hours a day, seven days a week? My second concern is the tractor-trailers merging safely onto southbound 395. It is uphill with only a 2/10 of a mile merge lane. This is not a long enough stretch of road for a semi to reach a safe merging speed of 65 miles per hour, forcing the through traffic traveling between 65 and 90 miles an hour, all into the left lane, causing a huge bottleneck, especially in inclement weather, where causing horrific accidents caused by the rapid deceleration and improper unsafe lane changes of the through traffic. My third concern is the semis traveling up 395 north in the winter. Anderson Pass sits at an elevation of 7,200 feet, and though it doesn't look steep and formidable, it is. I fear that semi drivers will not abide by the flashing chain control lights and bypass chaining up because their destination is only five minutes away. This will cause an accident and close the roads. As a reminder, there is only one way in and one way out of Cold Springs. When 395 is closed due to an accident or jackknife trailer, all of the Cold Springs residents, along with Northern Californian and Oregon travelers, are impacted. If the shutdown is long enough, this can back up traffic all the way to the spaghetti bowl affecting 80 and all of Reno. When this happens, we have no way to get home to our children, our elderly adults in our care, and our animals. Sometimes the freeway is closed for hours. When an accident occurs in 395 southbound, we are late for work, losing income and potentially our employment. We miss vital medical appointments, and children are late for school, and this disrupts the entire school day. My fourth concern, I'm already out of time, but anyway, obviously, the traffic is going to affect the quality of our life, and our lives are in your hands, because these semis are going to be horrible for our roads. Sorry.
Hi. My name is Helena Coglan. I'm a resident of Washoe County. I actually live in Sparks. I am very concerned about the Stonegate development and finding out that now we're looking at data centers with the warehousing out there. I actually wanted, I imagine some of you have heard some of these facts, but I'm just going to state some from some research I've done. Data centers can use up to 300,000 gallons of water per day. That's equivalent to 100,000 homes. That's a significant amount of water. And we've had some good years, but we know, those of us like myself, I'm a native Nevada, I know what it is when we have dry years. And so I'm very concerned about the water. That's one thing. Larger data centers, because I'm not sure exactly what the size is on these, the larger data centers can use 5 million gallons of water per day. On the average, just a simple data center, as far as power goes, they use 5 to 10 megawatts of power. The larger ones use over 100 megawatts. That's enough to power 80,000 homes in our area. This is very significant, the water and the power usage of these data centers. My other concern is the increasing demands from new data centers will contribute to higher electricity rates for households. In some cases, consumers, we will end up subsidizing the energy cost of possible large tech companies. This is going to result in higher utility bills for average residents. I truly hope that the city of Reno will not support the Stonegate proposal, which includes the building of these data centers.
Good evening. Nicholas St. John, for the record. I'm in concurrence with what many of the previous speakers have said, and what I'd like to do is commend them and the people who've shown up here that have the concern about what's going on. One of the things you guys have an issue with, as many boards do, is staff that can be able to go out and do that kind of investigative work. What we have done is we've shown up in mass today, having done all of that research that gives you a lot of the information you may or may not have had before, to make a really valid decision. So I implore you to seriously take a look at the information they're bringing you. It's very valid, it's good, and they've done a lot of research that would have taken you and your staff literally hours and hours and hours to get. So I applaud all those who've shown up today, and we appreciate your time, and hope you take what we're saying to heart and seriously, and vote against any changes for this Stonegate project.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Sheldon, and I concur with the previous speakers.
I believe this is Alan Munson.
Alan Munson, a resident of Washoe County, and I appreciate you doing your job, and I hope that you're hearing what your residents and your fellow citizens are requesting. I too, coming here to speak, that you don't go ahead with this Stonegate plan. And you've heard a lot of statistics that should be, you know, concerning to you, and just hope that you hear it, and, you know, it's a deception that's gone on. You know, we're told that there's going to be a lot of housing development, and now we're told, you know, like 64%, you know, decrease. You know, so honesty is really important, and I just hope that each one of you hear what your fellow citizens are telling you, and I thank you for your time.
Hello, members of the commission. My name is Colin McGinnis. I am a lifelong Reno resident and an organizer with the Sierra Club Toiabi Chapter. I am here today to voice my strong opposition to the proposed rezoning of the Stonegate Development Project in the North Valleys. This rezoning proposal is not in the best interest of our community and would significantly impact the quality of life for residents who live near the site. There are several negative impacts of this project on our natural resources, infrastructure, and public services, and not enough consideration has been taken to mitigate these negative impacts. These rezoning changes would get rid of a previous agreement that Stonegate had made to pay for public safety services in the area, such as police, fire, and ambulance. The cost of these services would instead fall to the city, which is already struggling with its budget and conducting layoffs as a result. This board needs to take into consideration the adverse impact of this rezoning proposal on public safety and the health of nearby communities. This rezoning request would scrap the original plan to build a significant amount of residential housing, and instead, a 250-acre data center has been proposed. The impact on our natural resources would be significant. From 2001 to 2022, the Cold Springs area has been in a drought for 15 of those 22 years, according to the National Drought Mitigation Center. We know that data centers can be incredibly thirsty and consume huge amounts of power and water. The large amount of electricity required to power these data centers will also contribute to rising utility costs and increase the rate of blackouts in the area. It doesn't benefit any one of the local community to have a huge data center in their backyard, which will produce greenhouse gases, consume massive amounts of water, and stress the power grid without providing a significant amount of long-term jobs. I urge this commission to deny this rezoning request and to take seriously the voices of the people who live in the area who have valid concerns about the impacts that this development would have on their daily lives.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chris Bell. I'm a Reno resident, and I'm requesting a no vote on Item 7D. The Stonegate proposal has changed and grown enormously, and there are critical issues still missing to make such a momentous and long-lasting mistake by permanently granting this development. I really should, I can't speak eloquently as so many others, but so I'll end here and say, "I really concur with some of the fantastic points that have been made, including traffic issues as well." But another thing that I'd like to bring up is that, and I've seen it, it's happening before our eyes, is the aesthetics of industrial areas. These big, ugly warehouses, they just go on and on and on. They really, you know, we're all living here because we think the landscape is exceptional. We love it. It's fantastic. It's beautiful. It's great to have views, and so many more views are being impinged by these aesthetic blights on the landscape, just big, white warehouses, anonymous things. It was far better when there was houses planned for such an area with landscaping and trees and things better for the community.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jane Tabor. I do not live in the area of Cold Springs, but I've been sitting here listening to what everyone has to say, so I thought maybe I'd add my two cents. I've lived in the area now for, off and on, for over 50 years. I have seen Reno, which had a population of 80,000 way back in the early 60s, to have blossomed into several hundred thousand now. I've watched it grow. I've watched decisions from the city council, from planning commission, from commission itself. And so I implore you on several fronts. First, no vote, of course, on this. The reasons for it, on the zone change, is that the history of Reno has been where the zone changes come, and the planning is presented, and as people have explained so far, you have a whole bunch of very wonderful things, the trees, the valleys, the water, blah. And then all of this sudden, the plan changes. I will give you two examples of that in the city of Reno. One, the Silver Legacy, when it was developing itself, the family there decided that they were going to submit a plan that would have entertainment for children, and this would be children-oriented. And lo and behold, it was kind of like the Pirates of the Caribbean. That did not happen, as everyone knows. That's one. The second one is the Boeing Stadium, where there was going to be a ballroom that extended out so that it could have a multi-use. That did not happen. It was going to be for the community. That did not happen. So what you have here now is an attack, I think, my personal opinion, on the residents of the city of Reno, which are facing many dilemmas. One, we live in a desert. We have water. Out there in Cold Springs, to the best of my ability, and I think everybody here who's from there will be able to correct me if I'm wrong, there are a lot of private wells. There's also something that happened with the federal government called the Clean Water Act, which requires that you have certain particles to meet the ability to use that water. And it applies to the whole United States, which I thought was very odd, because we're in the desert, we have the best source of water ever. But that may be, you still have a federal government thing that may be breathing down your neck, so I'm going to save you, hopefully, that embarrassment. You cannot change a residential area without having the neighborhood advisory boards available to listen to the residents. I encourage you to do that. And I'm so sorry, I'm out of time. I have a lot more to say. Maybe I'll put it in a letter.
We have two more.
Hello. Megan Ebert, for the record. I am the city council member for this ward, the elected representative. Just speaking on behalf of the community, that I feel several are here today, just to reinforce what the people are saying, that the community would like to see the PUD remain in place. A PUD that had a lot of participation from the community, a lot of input, a lot of amenities, schools, police station, fire station, parks, open space, trails around waterways, more homes, mix of types of development, commercial. There was some industrial as well, but more leaning towards a community aspect. And I'm just speaking here today because it's my duty as an elected representative to represent my community, and I believe it's everyone's duty on this board to also represent this community, the people that live here, people that live in the Cold Springs area, the people that helped decide what was in the PUD when Stonegate initially agreed to conforming to that PUD, when the community felt like they were getting a benefit. So this is just my public comment. I'll have additional comments when the agenda item is pulled, but just... I'll have additional comments when the agenda item is pulled, but just a reminder that it's our job to reflect the will of the people that we are representing. So, thank you.
Thank you for having me. My name is Becky Flannery, for the record. You got to hear from me last time, so I'll try not to rehash a bunch of the same stuff. But one of my biggest concerns, I'm going to be very frank about, is quality of life is one of Reno's master plan amendments. This is not quality of life for us. You've heard why. We've got the water, the traffic. We're going to pay for all this, no matter how you look at it. It's going to be on us, as the citizens, and that's not fair, that they can't afford to build what they want to build. That's their problem, not ours. Originally, they were saying 5,000 houses, which is actually, according to a Reno Gazette Journal article, is more than the entire town of Fallon for houses in our little tiny basin. So I wasn't for that either, but we definitely need housing and we need our fire departments and we need police and we need all the amenities that they had promised us that they're now trying to take away. I also am very concerned that this, if this gets approved, then they can build whatever they want and will not have to come in front of the Reno Planning Commission and will not have to go in front of City Council, will not have to come to you. They can legit build whatever they want, which is not fair to us. This is our beautiful little valley. We love it. We are terrified of water. We, we just had a fire. We've had three fires in two days. One of them blocked 395 for quite some time and people were stuck. So it's, we need a fire department. We need this stuff. And they're taking everything they promised away and this is just not fair to our community. We need some actual stuff for the valleys. We do not need more industrial. It is being built in everybody's backyard. Can you imagine if you bought a house and the next day you have a warehouse built there and nobody told you it was coming and now you get to listen to semi-trucks all night and the noise and the lights? And our valley is such a little basin that it's going to echo immensely every night. We're going to lose our stars. We're going to lose every ounce of our quality of life that we live out there and we love. We moved out there for that. There's actually people that have moved out here based on the Stonegate promise that there was going to be schools. They were told this was going to happen when they purchased their home. And now this is being taken away, which is kind of like false advertisement to people, which really is not very appropriate, correct? So I'm going to go ahead and take a seat now. Thank you so much.
We have one more. Ross Cooper.
I respect the time of the Commission. I respect the service of the Commission. I disagree with your premise that you needn't hear the same arguments over and over again, which is why we've all attended this evening. It's important to us, it's important to our families. When I came here in 1984 to attend the University of Nevada Reno, this was a casino town and not a particularly good one. But through my undergraduate degree, my master's in environmental science and health, I've watched this community grow and make significant improvements based on its environment and its advocacy for the arts and its pro-residential backing. We need more community and less industry. If I wanted to live in an industrial park, I'd move to Houston or East Newland Drive, out in Fernley. We've touched on water this evening. I'd like to give some data. Based on the projects listed in NV Energy's report, the data centers, the 12 data centers in there would directly consume 860 million to 5.7 billion gallons of water per year. This is requested electrical capacity from Professor Wren of UC Riverside in California. And this water would be consumed, meaning it would not be returned for credit. The indirect water drain would add up to 15.5 billion gallons per year. That is unsustainable, that is irresponsible, and it is destructive. Thank you.
Sorry, one more. Kathy Martson.
Sorry. I have to voice my opinion.
If anybody else would like to do public comment, please go up and fill up the form.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Martson and I've lived in Cold Springs, Cold Springs for about 22 years and I moved out there because it's quiet and peaceful. I can see the stars. I can hear the coyotes eating an animal in the middle of the night and it's really nice, sorta, for the, except for the animal. My basically thing is the same thing these guys, this data center is going to suck up all of our water and the people across from us are pretty much on whales. And I feel bad for them because I know a couple of families over there. And anyway, is it going to raise our taxes? Is it going to raise our water rates? What, what, and the power grid is horrible out there. It's all, it goes on for, goes off for two minutes, five minutes, 10 minutes, two hours. And the last time was New Year's Eve or New Year's Day in 2023 and it was out for 24, out for 28 hours. And luckily, my honey's a camper, so we survived it. But anyway, my question is to Stonegate people. I want to know if they'd like it in their own backyard? Would they like to wake up and go see this big old monstrous building sucking out their water and eating up their electricity in their front yard? Because we certainly don't. And other than that, these guys back here did great. Thank you. Bye-bye.
We do have one more, I believe. Kate Vineyard, I believe.
Kate Vineyard, for the record, and I have two kind of different points to make. First, when I did my research, I looked at what are we doing as far as having industrial vacancy? We have 11% vacancy already in Reno. We have a ton of places that people can go. People are trying to fill those spaces already, offering concessions and free rent. And in fact, they just built one off of Airway Boulevard over there that's sitting there empty. So we don't really need it. We've ended up adding 860,000 square feet already this year, so we don't need it. The second thing that bothers me about this plan is that they're taking away all of these houses and there's really a hunger for middle-class and lower-class housing. And those will all be gone. They're going to just do a little subset of 200 less expensive houses and then all these really nice houses. Well, guess what? The vacancy rate, they're not selling houses in the rest of Reno right now at the higher level. We have in our neighborhood, which is very nice, things sitting on the market for three, five, eight months. They're not selling. So this isn't really anything that's going to contribute to helping our community. Thank you.
And that is all for this item.
Okay. We have no more public comment. I'm going to close public comment and open up the public hearing on, on this to regional plan conformance review. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jeremy Smith, for the record. I'm going to take us through Item 5A. This is a continuation of Item 7D from the meeting we had on July 24th. And we already have given our presentation, so I'm going to go rather quickly through our presentation because tonight we've continued the item to hear from the applicant, which is the city of Reno, and their interested party, which is Stonegate. And further, we are planning to hear from Great Basin Water Company regarding the water resource. Thank you, Nate. Again, this is a both master plan amendment and project of regional significance for the Stonegate Heinz Ranch, CR 25-018. So the proposal was, for this master plan and project of regional significance, it was adopted by the Reno City Council on May 21st of 2025. Staff's determination at TMRPA after doing our research is that the, both the proposed master plan amendment and the project of regional significance conform with the 2019 Trucking Meadows Regional Plan. The reason that we're using the 2019 Regional Plan instead of the recently adopted 2024 Regional Plan is because this project started its process at the city of Reno prior to the adoption of the 2024 Regional Plan. And that is an option that we give and all folks in all cases, that's our, that's our standard practice. The clicker does not seem to be working. Nope, too far. Thank you. The location of the site is north of US Highway 385 and west of White Lake Parkway, partially south of White Lake and US Highway 385 in Cold Springs, approximately 1,767 acres. It is located in the Tier 2 Regional Land Designation. I want to remind us of what our legal counsel reminded us of at the last meeting, that we have a special and limited jurisdiction. And tonight, we're not voting on any particular use on the site. We are voting on a master plan amendment that changes the master plan designations on the site. We are not voting on any use. We're also voting on a regional conformance for a project of regional significance for one item, which is employment. Because of the change in master plan designation, it's been indicated through various uses on the site that there will be more jobs by more than 10% than there have been proposed for the existing planned unit development that's there today. And I'll show you those numbers. So just kind of regrounding us in, that's, that's really our lane here at regional planning. That is what we do. And so that is what we're, we're asking folks to consider tonight, is a master plan amendment and a project of regional significance for employment. Just a quick overview on the site. This is the existing land use, master plan designations on the site. It's all vacant, but this is actually what is approved through the PUD. You can see it does have a significant amount of residential. The yellow, orange, and brown colors are all different kinds of residential. The light residential to the bottom is large lot. We have single-family, multifamily, mixed neighborhood. There's a chunk of suburban mixed use up to the northeast and a little bit of industrial also up adjacent to the suburban mixed use. So that is what is actually approved today as part of the master plan at the city of Reno and through the Stonegate Planned Unit Development Handbook. The landowners are seeking to change and the city of Reno has approved the change at their level to take it from that existing planned unit development scenario I just showed you to this land use scenario, which is remarkably different. There is still residential contemplated in the southwest. However, that center portion, which was largely residential in the past picture, is now being proposed for industrial. There is also a chunk of suburban mixed use that also remains in the northeast. Just to take a look at how these numbers break down, what is, what is there now and how would it be changing? Probably the most sort of thing to look at would be this change in industrial, right? If you look at industrial, it's going from about 2.5% on the site to greater than 50% of the site. And that has a commensurate reduction of the industrial, as I just showed in the maps. And you can see also that the parks, greenways, and open space remains fairly consistent with a small drop, about 5%. There is an increase in single-family neighborhood, up to 12%, but generally a decrease overall in residential potential, as folks have pointed out. Currently approved for 5,000 dwelling units, this proposal, if approved, would bring that number down to 1,350. These are the review criteria that regional planning uses, our staff uses, to perform a conformance review against any requests we have for a conformance against the regional plan, for master plan amendments, projects of regional significance, or facility plan review. Five sections, so we're going to go through each one really quick. So in terms of population growth, it is absolutely true that this change would reduce the number of housing units in that area by roughly 3,650 units. When we look at the future of the region, we're always looking at what has been approved on paper. What has been, what's, what's been approved also, is it servable with infrastructure or has it been served? These are things that we're, we're looking for. In this particular case, this site is in the Tier 2 Regional Land Designation, which currently has on the order of 46,000 units approved through some process, whether that's regular zoning, planned unit developments, or active tentative maps. Those are the, the data that we track in a GIS. Now, the forecast out to 2050 that I recently performed for the Regional Transportation Commission sought to build on the order of 22,000 units in Tier 2 out to 2050. And so as a region, we have enough housing units in Tier 2 to meet the demand that this Washoe County consensus forecast work that we do indicates is coming. Now, that doesn't mean that this won't impact where that occurs, because obviously it will. But in terms of total numbers, we do have on the books, through these processes we're doing right now, a significant number of housing units enough to meet our 25-year demand for this regional land designation. In terms of regional form, the site is located in Tier 2, as I mentioned. These types of uses, both housing and industrial and commercial and mixed use, are regular occurrences in Tier 2 and a likely type of use, they're compatible with the Tier 2 Regional Land Designation. It's also within the incorporated boundary of the city of Reno. Hold on, get some notes here. Further, from a regional form perspective, the large increase in prospective jobs that will be happening associated with this change, changes and increases, or balances really, the jobs-housing balance in the region. It provides more jobs than are currently contemplated today. And that gives folks options for jobs, number one, if they live nearby, and number two, as a reverse commute potential, because now jobs are located in this site and it's going to, if you're going to work in the morning, you're going to be going the opposite of most people leaving Cold Springs to come down to work in the core. In terms of public facilities and services, public facilities and services are generally available to serve the site. I want to go directly to this slide, which talks about what's changing, right? So we're going from the existing Stonegate Planned Unit Development, which was approved in 2018, 5,000 housing units, we talked about that change. Traffic at that time was forecasted at over 60,000 trips daily. That triggered at that time, the traffic, all of these things triggered at that time, the project of regional significance review. So back in 2018, this agency performed a project of regional significance review for the Stonegate PUD that is now on the books. So these are the numbers, 60,554 for traffic, water use at 2,518 acre-feet per year, exceeding the 625 that triggers the threshold. Sewage generation forecasted to be 1.4 million gallons per day. That's well beyond the 187,500 that triggers it. In terms of student population generation, the trigger is 325 students. The Stonegate development was proposed to add to the Washoe County, or just students in general, 2,310 students. And finally, at the time, it did trigger the project of regional significance for employment as well, with 930, or, sorry, 2,257 employees, which is well above 938. So that is what is approved today. That's what's on the site now. The proposal that's come through here is looking to change that. It's looking to change what is going to happen out there. We talked about the housing units going, proposed to go from 5,000 down to 1,350. In terms of the traffic, traffic, through the traffic study that has been provided, shows that the traffic number of trips seems to be going down from 60,554 to 49,778. In terms of water usage as well, 2,500 acre-feet, 2,500 acre-feet is what the, the demand is forecasted to be today. Under this proposal, the forecast is 1,000. Let's just say that that's a little low. We taught, we heard about certain uses that might use water. It's still well below what is there, the demand that will be required today. In terms of sewage, likewise, using less water generates less sewage and that is also lower than what we're forecasting for the existing development. Student population, 300, or, sorry, going from 230, 2,310 down to 424, that's also a significant decrease that has impacts. a significant decrease that has impacts on the planning and the fiscal planning for the Washoe County School District. Well, I'm going to show you a slide on that in a sec. But then when we see based on this industrial master plan land use and the variety of uses that are, would be possible out there, that would be not be done at this body, but back at the city, those uses would be approved or not through the processes there. According to this, according to the information we've got and our own independent review, it's much higher than it was under the existing PUD on the order of 8,000 jobs compared to 2,200 with the existing planned unit development. So that is why we can see that overall, if you look at this slide, these numbers that we have, which are the numbers we have to work with, show that the impacts to these systems are going down with this proposal.
Come on, guys. Hey, please, quiet. Thank you.
I, at the last meeting, was able to answer at least partially the question about the new school out there. I believe it's called Michael Inskeep Elementary School there at the north part of Woodland Village. I, I learned some more information about the school by talking to the Washoe County School District staff, and they informed me that this Inskeep Elementary School was built to relieve pressure, generally to serve housing development in that area. So Stonegate being a housing development at this time is part of that, absolutely. However, even without any houses being built in Stonegate, the Inskeep Elementary School allows them to relieve pressure on Gomes Elementary. Apparently, Gomes Elementary fifth graders have had to go to fifth grade at the middle school, the Cold Springs Middle School, because they did not have room at Gomes. The Inskeep School has actually solved a real-time need to bring students back into elementary school at fifth grade. Further, the North Valleys High School is planned for about $100 million worth of attention in the facilities monetization program that the Washoe County School District is currently underway with. And these, the folks that I spoke to, the planners, also indicated that they thought that the new Debbie Smith Academy, which is at the old HUG site, as well as the recently approved Mater Academy, would work to absorb some of the students that would typically be going to the North Valleys High School. So there are these infrastructure elements in place to account for the students that are being generated. In terms of natural resources, what we see is that there are not, we don't anticipate significant impacts to natural resources. There certainly are a few things that are out there. There are mule deer herds and migration corridors in the region. There's also been, to my understanding, a dedication of around 400 acres for mule deer habitat. There is an avasia species, that's an endangered species, that has been fenced, three acres worth, and that fencing currently, I think, is a construction fencing, but will be permanent fencing for the lifetime of that area to protect endangered species. And finally, there are development constrained areas on the site, 30% or greater than 30% slopes, and those areas that are constrained are prohibited for development. They are contained within the parks, greenways, and open space footprint of, of the proposed master plan change. Finally, regional coordination is something that we like to keep at the forefront of our work at regional planning. It's in the name and it's one of our, our main tasks and functions. And that's why we've worked with the City of Reno, we've worked with the school district, we've worked with all the entities to try to talk about what are these impacts, what do we anticipate? And we're always looking for that coordination piece. I'm not sure why the slides aren't forwarding. Can we go to the next slide, please? Let me go back when I make sure I got them all. So I'm going to put this here now, but really, we're going to hold on these motions because tonight we'll be asking you to make two motions, or at least the first one, and we'll see how it goes from there if that one is approved or not. But these are two separate things that we have to do, a master plan amendment motion and a project of regional significance. So at this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to this, the City of Reno, to come up and present us with their interested party, a presentation about the project. Thank you.
If it works, I hope it works for you better than me. Can I just test it out? Okay. What's that? Okay. Good evening. Jeff Foster, Associate Planner, City of Reno, applicant to the Regional Planning Commission and TMRPA. Tonight, my amendment and project of regional significance. Oh, okay. So I'm going to keep it brief on these two slides. These are the current acreages and the proposed acreages that Mr. Smith just went over. No reason to spend any time on those. Similarly, the allowed uses under the Stonegate PUD, as well as the proposed potential project plan, the numbers that Mr. Smith went over a few minutes ago. So we are, no reason to spend any more time on those. So in terms of what the City of Reno analyzed in terms of land use compatibility and in terms of making the determination that the proposed land uses were compatible, the commercial land uses in the northeast portion of the site are adjacent to major roads and industrial. And so this isn't in a presentation format, but in any case, the red arrow up in the upper right corner is the suburban mixed use, the commercial land uses. The single family in the southern portion of the site is separated from the proposed industrial uses by the railroad tracks. That's in that lower oval, red oval, and the open space buffers that are in that area. And then the industrial uses in the center of the site would also be adjacent to the existing residential uses in the county, and those would be separated by a 100-foot wide open space buffer, and that's in that oval at the top there. And it's worth noting that that 100-foot wide parks, greenways, and open space buffer satisfied Washoe County community development. If the master plan amendment is approved here at Regional, this is not the last bite at the apple that the decision makers have in terms of analyzing potential future development that would be allowed under the master plan and the zoning. Specifically, issues such as site constraints from topography, vegetation, year-round streams, and, and existing easements would require the City of Reno to look at the potential future impacts as a part of public review entitlement processes and building permits for things such as steep slopes and hillside development, cuts and fills, disturbance of major drainage ways, residential adjacency, specific industrial uses such as data centers that require a conditional use permit, and a tentative map review for residential. So in other words, again, this is not the last bite at the apple. The applicants will not be able to just move forward carte blanche with development if this is approved. There are many, many additional future entitlements that would be required to develop under the proposed land use plans. The city also looked at, oh, one more thing on that last slide. In all cases, the required entitlements would allow the city and other reviewing agencies to ensure that any future development meets Title 18 standards, that's the City of Reno zoning code, and that all potential impacts to the general area and surrounding neighborhoods are addressed and properly mitigated. Turning to master plan conformance, the proposed requests present four major themes supported by numerous master plan goals and policies, starting with a mix of over 1,300 residential units combined with jobs. Next, zoning to support a variety of commercial and industrial uses. Next, buffering between residential and industrial uses. And last but not least, a significant amount of designated open space acreage. This is what the city looked at in terms of determining master plan conformance. These are the general review criteria that the city looks at. Staff was able to make all recommended findings for general review criteria, acknowledging that some things will be analyzed in the future depending on the specifics of proposed development. Here are the master plan recommended findings that the city had to make. Again, staff and the city could make all recommended findings, including the conformance with the master plan, as I talked about a minute ago, and compatibility, as well as the provision of public services and facilities. Though the things that I'm about to talk about are not under the purview of the Regional Planning Commission, I did want to touch on five things that were addressed two weeks ago and just provide some more information. Regarding data centers, I was the planner on the three data centers that were approved at the city over the course of the last year. Modern data centers are not the egregious water users that data centers in the past have been. The most intensive water user data center of the three used approximately eight acre feet of water per year. The average single-family home uses approximately a half an acre foot to an acre foot of water per year. Therefore, the most intensive water user that was approved by the city in terms of data centers would use the equivalent water usage of approximately eight to 16 single-family homes. Data centers, modern data centers, are not the egregious water users that they were in the past. I would also point out that the conditional use permit process is a requirement. All data centers in the City of Reno are required to go through a conditional use permit process. In fact, data centers are allowed in other zones, not just industrial. Data centers are allowed in general, commercial, mixed-use suburban, mixed-use urban, even one of the downtown districts allow data centers. So the CUP process is in place to ensure that impacts are mitigated. And so the, the notion that the industrial, 923 acres of industrial are going to allow a rash of data centers to be proposed, data centers could be proposed in the City of Reno in any number of zones, but they do, they are required to go through the conditional use permit process. In terms of the question of why industrial versus industrial-commercial, please note that allowed uses by right or with a conditional use permit in I and IC are virtually the same. The main difference is that IC has a 500,000 square foot maximum building area. Other than that, industrial versus industrial-commercial are very similar in terms of the zone. Lighting, future development will be addressed, whether it's at the entitlement phase or the building permit phase for compliance with the Title 18 standards for lighting. Point being that the impacts for lighting impacts, potential lighting impacts would be mitigated during entitlement phases and/or building permits. There was a request last time about increasing the amount of general commercial zoning or suburban mixed use in terms of land use designations. But I would also point out that commercial uses such as retail, restaurants, and offices are allowed in industrial zoning by right. So there doesn't need to necessarily be more general commercial acreage in order to have more commercial uses. Those uses can all be developed in the industrial zoning. And last but not least, let me be clear that infrastructure will not be the responsibility of residents in the area. The, the cost to develop infrastructure necessary to support proposed development under the land use plan would be borne by the developer. The developer pays for infrastructure, not the residents of the area. Those are the topics I wanted to discuss. The applicant's interested party will now be making a presentation, and I look forward
As the presentation's being brought up, I'll just introduce myself. For the record, Andy Durling with, with Wood Rogers, representing the Stonegate applicant. Just providing you tonight with a lot greater detail than we had the opportunity, obviously, to do last time. Understanding that, you know, from Mr. Smith and legal counsel's direction, right, your purview is a little different in this case as compared to, say, you know, at your local planning commissions. So a lot of what we're going to be providing tonight is a lot more information than you would typically get at this level, but hopefully it presents to you. Some of the project history on this. The Heinz Ranch has been private property, was established in the late 1800s. About 7,000 acres total was annexed in 2005 into the City of Reno. That's the, the map that's shown on the screen there, showing that 2005 annexation boundary include, included obviously the Stonegate area, but a large additional areas as well, many of which have large residential PUDs already approved on them. Heinz Ranch was then master planned by the city in 2006. The original master plan actually was primarily industrial. You can see there on the screen with some limited residential and commercial. In 2014, the Heinz Ranch sold to the current ownership group when they started working on the residential PUD, which was approved in 2018 and was found in conformance here at the Regional Planning Commission at that time. In 2021, from 2018 to 2021, they were very busy working to get that residential PUD off the ground. They obtained more than 95 approvals, agreements, easements, different rights of way permits, and were, had three different bid packages out to bid to construct. And unfortunately, if we all remember, in 2021, we experienced hyperinflation that never recovered, and ultimately, the upfront infrastructure costs then for that residential development became too high and ultimately rendered that residential PUD to be infeasible to actually construct. So it is far too expensive to build the infrastructure to get there, to actually then build the homes themselves. So that being the case, they retooled, came back with a much smaller plan, and as we'll go through, the infrastructure needs for what we're proposing now is considerably less than the residential, and that is also able to use a lot of the resources they currently have without having to like, say, import water. And so in 2024, we submitted this new master plan amendment and rezoning. So just an overview, what we have proposed does allow for a mix of standard zoning districts that are in conformance with the City of Reno's approvals for this project that consists of industrial, about 923 acres, general, commercial, residential, still on the south side there, and about 404 acres of, of parks, greenways, and open space. The industrial zoning allows for a number of commercial uses as the City of Reno shared, just shared with you. Based on our market analysis, we anticipate about 2% to 5% of the total land area should be allocated towards retail and commercial land uses. So when you have employment-type uses in those industrial districts, it stands to reason that along with that, you would need additional services like commercial restaurant offices, things like that. Stonegate is also in contract to buy an additional 43 acres, just also on the south side of 395 there. It's already zoned industrial and general commercial, so it's highlighted there in the yellow. So when you take those additional properties that they already, they're already zoned appropriately for what they want to do, so that's why they're not included in this request right now. And so with those additional properties, they end up with, you know, a mix, upwards of about 98 acres, about, which is 5% of the land total for general commercial-type uses. And when you look at that breakdown then of the, all the uses that are being proposed, 53% of that is industrial, 21% is parks, greenways, and open space, 20, I'm sorry, yeah, another 21% is residential, and then the 5% is general commercial. So it, it does represent a, a nice mix of, of total uses here. We did look at this in the context of the City of Reno's master plan. That's one of the legal findings that has to be made by the city, which they did make, that it conforms with the, the, the master plan. Looking at the City of Reno's master plan, it's essentially made up of three components. The first is this overarching guiding principles. We meet 44 of the guiding principles throughout the different categories as is outlined there. The second component of the city's master plan are more area-specific, so they're neighborhood-specific elements. Because we still have a mix of uses, we obviously meet a lot of different variable goals within the area-specific policies. 22 different goals, whether it's in industrial logistics areas or in those residential neighborhoods, because we do have the mix of uses. And then finally, the third kind of leg of the stool for the city's master plan, City of Reno's master plan, is this growth and reinvestment framework. That essentially calls for a couple of different things. One, it calls for the city as a whole to have an appropriate mix of land uses throughout the city. We definitely emulate that with the mix of land uses that we have, and we'll get into a little bit more detail in the rest of our presentation to demonstrate how this actually helps the city with their land use mix by providing additional industrial, which is much needed in the region for employment uses. And then the second part of that is this, essentially it's concurrency of infrastructure, that water, sewer, flood management, transportation, public safety, parks, trails, and open space, all are constructed concurrently with the development, and all of those can be demonstrated that they will. that they will. One of the other findings the city has to make is compatibility. Jeff Foster shared a little bit of this, but just to reinforce this, the criteria demonstrates that there's a reasonable compatibility with nearby land uses. One of the first and foremost, as Mr. Smith noted, it creates a live-work opportunity, jobs-housing balance in the North Valleys, and we'll share some, some data on that for how many people are actually leaving the valley during the day to seek employment. It proposes a mix of land uses beyond just industrial with commercial, supporting commercial, residential, and open space. It includes different buffering and transition zones, including open space buffers around large portions of the property, especially up to existing residential in the county and along the freeway and White Lake, as well as public, open space buffers to the public land to the south of us, the U.S. Forest Service land. It supports multiple transportation opportunities. This industrial, it's unlike, you know, maybe some of the other industrial that's within the North Valleys where you'd have to use, say, Sted Boulevard and go through neighborhoods. This has direct access to the freeway and allows for better on and off and segregation of those truck trips to the interstate and highway system rather than local streets that are going through neighborhoods. Does have rail access, and then we are anticipating and planning for a future trail system, which I can share a little bit about on future sides as well. Improves stormwater management and demonstrates that available infrastructure can be utilized for the project. So, looking again back at history, 2006 largely industrial plan, actually a little bit more industrial than what's proposed now. We have incorporated additional open space, which is reflective of some of the natural resources that Mr. Smith noted. So, we anticipate, we have a position that, you know, this, this was found in compatible, compatibility with the regional plan in 2006. The city's master plan was found to be in conformance with the current regional plan with this proposal, as we have demonstrated how it conforms to the city's master plan. It also conforms to that historical land use pattern that was originally anticipated out here when this was annexed in the, in the early 2000s. This is, and should be found in conformance with the regional plan today. So, some of the regional benefits. Sewer service, it was already been planned for. Like I said, they were, they were ready to break ground on the residential project and had acquired a number of easements and had, this was one of the bid packages ready, that was ready to construct, excuse me, have, there's an interlocal sewer agreement with Washoe County and the city that was approved in 2019. This rezone, because of the switch from mainly residential to mostly industrial, reduces the, the demand on sewer by about 44%. Exists easement and right-of-way is, are in place. Cisworth, the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility is managed by the county, and they are in the works to be able to return some of that treated effluent to Stonegate for a couple of purposes. One could be used for industrial uses, but also for groundwater recharge on the south side of this basin where they're currently injecting water in, in the north side. So, that would help to balance the water, and I think you'll hear from James Eason with Great Basin on that topic. So, it promotes a better water balance for the Cold Springs Basin overall, in addition to not having to import water into this basin. We're using water in the basin, treating it in the basin, re-injecting it in the basin. It's a, it's a closed loop, if you will. This creates also a kind of an added community benefit where this easement has, has to have a maintenance access road along the top of it, so that would serve as a, as a really nice multi-use trail along the, if you look at the, the yellow part there, about the eastern half of White Lake connecting to the existing Cold Springs Park, and then we are anticipating on the south side, a park and trailhead feature as well. So, there would be, you know, a, a community benefit for that trail feature. It should be noted, too, White Lake is all privately held, so there's no public access to White Lake, so this would be an additional amenity that doesn't currently exist in the community. Water demand, water's been, obviously, been a hot topic. The PUD that's currently approved requires about 2,500 acre feet of water. This rezone needs about 1,000 acre feet of water, so that's a 60% reduction. Stonegate has adjudicated water rights on the order of about 1,700 acre feet. They're the senior-most rights in the basin dating back to the 1800s, the latest, and quarterly flow measurements have been monitored for the past 10-plus years. They have three onsite water resources, which include groundwater, springs, and streams. The state engineer just earlier this summer issued permits for the switch of those water rights to quasi-manipulative water rights to the total of, that can be used about 1,185. So, the difference there between the 1,700, the 1,185 is broken down as this. 314 acre feet could be immediately used from existing wells for groundwater. 871 acre feet have a future use upon completion of, and acceptance of the infrastructure and proof of those flows. And then, 515 acre feet remains untouched for flora and fauna, so that adds up to the And should note, this is just a snapshot of that permit issued by the state engineer on those water rights. Plan traffic improvements in the North Valleys, obviously, there's a lot of construction going on out there right now, and there will continue to be over time as those are phased. In the current regional transportation plan, there's about $2.5 billion worth of planned and budgeted projects over the next 25 years. Those planned improvements actually already include the, the projected traffic volumes from the residential PUD for Stonegate, which obviously is much higher than the anticipated industrial, so there's some kind of built-in buffer in there, if you will, and those would be done concurrent with the 395 capacity improvements. Improvements then would also be constructed by Stonegate, so they would be constructing their local infrastructure needs, right, you know, kind of at their front door, if you will. It'll be phased with development. They already had an agreement because of, again, working forward on, on the residential development that was deemed economically infeasible. They had an agreement with Endot to build improvements to the White Lake 395 interchange as well as drainage improvements. 395 does have the tendency to flood in really heavy years, and Stonegate was going to be improving the drainage so that the water would not be overtopping 395 in the future. In addition, I heard some, some comments about truck traffic on the, on that interchange in particular. We are anticipating a longer on-ramp there to allow trucks to get up to speed. It wouldn't just be the, what you see out there right now. Also included in the, in the RTC's 2050 Regional Transportation Plan is a widening of White Lake Parkway, as well as the internal roadways and connectivity with frontage roads as part of the construction of, of Stonegate. Public transportation doesn't exist in Cold Springs, however, with the introduction of large employment uses, it does get RTC to start looking at those transit plans into the future, and one thing we do anticipate is you would have employer-sponsored programs to promote ride sharing and car pooling. We have a very successful program here through the RTC, and the RTC and city of Reno often team up to implore employers to, to incorporate those into these developments. Our traffic, traffic analysis is based on land use consum, assumptions. Obviously, we have to base the numbers on something, so it looks at the build-out estimate details as required by the city of Reno. Those build-out assumptions are based on the mix of the different zoning designation, and on the chart on your right there, just kind of looking at the different types, you know, we looked at a mix of residential, a mix of commercial-type uses, and then a mix of industrial-type uses as well. About 22% of the total traffic to be generated by this development is residential in nature, 34% is commercial in nature, and 44% is industrial. When you compare the future anticipated, again, looking at build-out of the residential PUD as compared to build-out of this current proposal, you're looking at about an 18% reduction in, in total trip generation from the build-out of this property. In addition to that, you know, this project would have to pay regional road impact fees. That's on the order of a little over $18 million that would go into the coffers to be spent in the north benefit district for RTC's impact fee district. And then, there was a question that came up at the last one, and Lauren Chilson with GCW is here to answer any specific questions on traffic, but traffic, truck traffic accounts for about 7% to 9% of the peak hour traffic volumes, and that's per the Institute of Traffic We've talked a lot about the comparison of this with the existing PUD. Again, it's a total trip reduction of about eight, or trip generation of about 18%. Again, that's at build-out. That accounts for about 36, 36% less outbound morning trips in the morning and 26 less inbound trips in the afternoon. It creates a reverse commute because you're now in employment, you're a traffic attractor. Now, you're attracting people that are from, you know, outside of the North Valleys to, to make their employment trip, you know, to, to this area, creating reversed trips and reversed commutes, and helps balance overall traffic distribution throughout the day as well, resulting in about a 9% less traffic going down the 395 in the mornings and coming home in the afternoons, and that's due to 43% of those trips are staying within the North Valleys. So, those, those folks are working and living in the North Valleys with that jobs-housing balance. Creates, one of the, the side effects of this, when you have more trips that are staying in the valley, have more people staying in the valley, creates more demand for North Valleys' commercial services, restaurants, retail, things like that. Truck traffic, like I mentioned earlier, is confined to the freeway and then internal roads that we'd be constructing ourselves, not through existing neighborhoods. So, building on these, you know, like I said, these trips that are staying within the North Valleys, we, we had the Conquer Group, which is an economist, other economists, they looked at the marketability of commercial, more, you know, retail, commercial-type uses in particular, and we wanted to look at it in the context of things that were, you know, that we could kind of point to here locally. And so, we, we kind of had this juxtaposition of the North Valleys to the South Valleys, so South Reno, South Meadows, Damone Ranch, those types of areas down on the south side of town. And when you look at it, it's really interesting, on that bar chart on the, on the bottom there, it shows the total number of employed labor within those two submarkets. They're virtually the same, so about 29,000 employed people that are in the North Valleys and the same in, in South Reno. The stark difference is when you look at the top bar chart there, about 12,500 of those employees are leaving the North Valleys during the day, and close to 14,000 employees are going to South Reno during the day. And that's coming from all over, you know, town, not necessarily a one-for-one from north to south. And so, when you look at then, again, the bottom bar chart, the total number of jobs, there's almost 44,000 total jobs in South Reno. So, for the 29,000 of employed people, obviously, they're picking up quite a bit of additional labor force that's coming into that market during the day. And then, in the North Valleys, you only have 16,500 current jobs. So, that, we feel, is, is part of the problem, you know. North Valleys is, is a, you know, bedroom community. The data here shows that folks have to leave the valley largely, you know, large portions of those folks have to leave the valley during the day for their employment, and what that, what happens then is then those spending dollars that they would have, you know, during the day for lunches and coffees and things like that, they're going to other parts of the region. So, by increasing employment in the North Valleys with a project like this, it leads to a significant boost in spending, particularly during lunch hours and after work, which is an essential for restaurants to survive. Restaurants have to have kind of two services per day, a breakfast, lunch, a lunch-dinner, and so, without kind of a lunch crowd, if you will, you, it's, it's very difficult to have, you know, restaurants in, in these areas. This looks at it a little further, so currently, in the middle portion there, it looks at the North Valleys, a lot of different kind of statistics. The North Valleys then with Stonegate, so it factors in kind of the build-out of this, and then has that comparison to South Reno. And ultimately, what, you know, some of the benefits are, it's, you know, they're still residential, so there's still be population growth, about 3,700 new families, 6% density increase, population density increase with those 1,350 new households. It creates 11,000 new workers in, in the North Valleys, which then spins off the need for an additional 210,000 square feet of new retail, 32 potential new restaurants, and an increase of 40% in total per capita spending within the North Valleys, actually getting it kind of on the order of what South Reno's experiencing. The median income then has an impact with 17% income growth and 8%, 8, about 8% home So, just in summary, kind of some of the regional benefits, it does create thousands of permanent and construction jobs. We do have new parks and trails and open space as part of this. One thing that, you know, was kind of glossed over, you know, 404 acre feet, or sorry, acres of parks, greenways, and open space, a lot of that, you know, up adjacent to the U.S. Forest Service. This land has been an active ranch. You haven't, you know, there's not been public access that's been through it. So, as this develops, you would have access now to those public lands. There's a lot of beautiful hiking and, and off-road trails and things like that in, in the peyvine wilderness there. New diverse housing stocks.
You're going to have to be quiet, please, okay? I was trying to give a presentation. Thank you.
We have new diverse housing stocks, so increasing, obviously, 1,350 new units. That new access to public lands, like I mentioned, the induced need for new services, groceries, eating and drinking establishments. And then, one thing that we didn't really mention at all in this presentation, but want to highlight is, you know, with this change from, from, you know, a potential of residential to a potential of more employment-based, that has kind of a twofold impact on the fiscal side and the fiscal impact for the city of Reno, Washoe County, Washoe School District, it's, it's all encompassing here. The property taxes that are generated from commercial and industrial much higher and don't have the same caps as residential does, I think a lot of us are familiar with that. Additionally, sales tax revenue, and then, on the flip side of it, industrial land, things like that, those, those industrial-type uses require far less services, so far less calls for service for police and fire, so they're a fiscal positive as compared to, much more fiscally positive as compared to residential. So, some of the decreases and impacts, again, compared to the approved PUD of what could be, 18% less traffic generated, 16, 60% decrease in the amount of water that's required, a 44% decrease in the amount of sewer that's generated, and 82% decrease in, in the number of students that are generated from this development. Again, it does meet and was found to have met the city of Reno's master plan amendment findings, which requires substantial conformance with the master plan, guiding principles, area-specific policies, and the growth and reinvestment framework, as was outlined in the presentation, is reasonably compatible with the nearby land uses by providing, you know, it's previously found to be compatible back in 2006 when it was annexed. It's buffering and transition zones that we have been incorporated, the mix of land uses and the live-work opportunities for North Valleys. Public services and facilities can be provided in accordance with the city of Reno's master plan concurrency management system. That includes utility, infrastructure, freeway improvements that are underway on 395 stormwater, which has already been planned for to be an increase in the amount of storage, roadway improvements that are already planned, and then, public safety and parks, which also have already been planned for this development. So, turning back now, that's a lot of detail to get you to the point. As your regional staff, you know, led you through your policy RC9 for the, for the regional plan is, is the guidepost for this. When it comes to population growth, it still is able to meet that finding regional form. It may, it meets the regional form requirements in the regional plan. Public facilities and services can be accounted for and are less than what is currently approved. Natural resources are addressed, and regional coordination is also addressed. So, with that, we would be happy to answer any questions. We do have subject matter experts for any specific questions you may have, and I believe James Eason with Great Basin Water is going to speak next.
Good evening. Where do I point this way? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. For the record, my name is James Eason. I'm with Great Basin Water, and I would like to start off by, one, thanking you for giving me the opportunity to speak about our utility. As I spoke last time during our public comment, want to go kind of provide an overview of who we are, educate Want to go kind of provide an overview of who we are, educate the board or the commission about our company and our utility and our responsibility to our customers in Cold Springs and throughout the state of Nevada. So with that, I want to emphasize that protecting our existing customers is our number one priority. And along with this presentation, how do we improve the water balance in that basin? As we look through this project, when Stonegate approached us about the annexation. We sat down with Stonegate and looked at the different options. Were we the right fit? How did it impact our customers? And what were the long-term and short-term benefits? And what were the long-term impacts to our customers? And could we be able to provide that service? So with those, as I go through this presentation, you'll see I will go over the existing infrastructure. We'll go over our existing water demands and our future demands for our existing customers. We'll also talk about how we protect ourselves from over pumping in the basin. I know those were questions that were brought up earlier tonight. What are the groundwater levels in the basin? I think that is critical. How we work with the state engineer's office, who manages those levels and who we report to. And then the last part is Stonegate's request for annexation into the Great Basin Service Territory. We'll talk about, a little bit about what Andy taught, touched on, on the different diversifications or the three different ways water will be brought into this project. We'll talk about all the improvements. I know there's been a lot of questions about who pays for what. We will address that. It's very clear, development pays for all, all new development, not the existing customers. Protection from the over pumping of the basin is critical because that addresses our existing concerns and our existing customers, protects them and also our future customers. And then last but not least is how we are going to manage the entire basin from a water resource standpoint and what we're looking forward in the future. So with that. I want to talk about, a little bit about who we are. Nexus Water owns Great Basin Cold Spring System. It also owns four other, excuse me, three other systems in the state of Nevada and Spanish Springs, Cold Spring Creek and also Perump. We are the largest regulated water utility. And along with that, we are also the largest regulated wastewater utility. We do have systems in Spring Creek and also in Perump. So I am familiar with both sides of the utility business when it comes to water and wastewater. And we also provide reuse services in our system down in Perump where we do provide reuse services to schools, golf courses and parks. Those are some of our customers. As I said earlier, we are regulated in the state of Nevada. We've been regulated prior to us, the water system in Cold Springs was owned by the Reno Park Water Company. It was purchased by Great Basin in nineteen ninety eight. And in two thousand and twenty four, I, I want to emphasize this, I want to touch on a little bit about our history. We merged with another larger utility called Southwestern Water to create the Nexus Water Group. We provide customers services to water and wastewater customers in twenty different states and two Canadian provinces, which equates to about one point three million customers. Next. Little bit about our Cold Springs Service Territory. Does this have a pointer by chance? If, I'm going to point to, yeah, perfect. If you could come down and go to the purple on the right-hand side where it says Stonegate, yep. I want to touch on those two items that Andy brought up. Those are existing areas that are already in our annexed service territory. Those are customers. So what I'm going to be demonstrating or talking to you about tonight is how Stonegate will be fitting into those. Those two parcels, we already maintain and own the water rights. They are not developed at this time, but they have been part of our system since the late eighties, early nineties, just to give you a little bit of history. The information that I'm going to be citing comes out of the two thousand and twenty four Integrated Resource Plan. The Integrated Resource Plan is very critical to our utility. It is a requirement by the Public Utilities Commission that we must file every three years. It is a twenty year looking master plan with a three-year action plan. So we look out twenty years at what the growth is going to be, what our infrastructure or capital X requirements are going to be. And we analyze our system and we break it down into three components when we do that. We look at production, which would be water source. We look at storage, which would be tanks. And then we look at transmission or distribution, which would be piping. Booster pumps fall under that category for us. Those are critical as they move through our system. So the Integrated Resource Plan, these numbers you'll see, we currently serve three thousand eight hundred and forty-three. That was of March of two thousand and twenty-four. We're almost at four thousand customers, we're at three thousand nine hundred and eighty-three, just to give you an idea. So the next piece is the critical piece that begins with our system and that is the infrastructure. So the existing infrastructure you see here will not be used by Stonegate. It will be, best way to put it, it'll, it'll be supported by Stonegate as new development must support existing customers. So if you look at our existing groundwater wells, we have five. There are no water wells that will be contributing to this new infrastructure. The storage tanks will not be associated with this new project. Neither will the booster stations or the four different pressure zones. So I just wanted to point that out. And we have to analyze that and we do this for all new development. The Cold Spring System has had three new annexations within, since two thousand and twenty-one for additional projects that have been a mixture of both residential, some apartments and then industrial. One thing that I do want to add and, and there has been some concern about reliability of the system. If you look under their groundwater wells and also our booster pump stations, we do have backup generation at all those locations. We've had, started down that path in the two thousand and eighteen consolidated IRP for all of our systems. We were well, well aware of the threat that was coming down to whether it was loss of power or the fire requirements that NV Energy is now going through. The last piece on this slide that I want to emphasize is that we are currently utilizing a groundwater resources only. And that's important to remember as we go through this presentation. Also, all new water rights, all new development, all those water rights are dedicated to us. Great Basin is not a water utility purveyor where we go out and buy water rights. All development has to bring their water rights. If they do not bring it, we will not accept them into our service territory. So I wanted that as a point of clarification, I think it's very important. So, and they have to be in good standing with the state of Nevada. And as Andy pointed out earlier, the water rights for this particular project are the oldest water rights in the basin and they are the most senior rights, they're junior to our existing rights. There we go. A little more on this slide. We will be updating a lot of this information in our next IRP, which will be in two thousand and twenty-seven. I do want to point out that our existing residential build out is expected in two thousand and thirty-one. We are on track for that. We serve about a population base between ten thousand to eleven thousand customers in Cold Springs. Our water consumption over the last ten years has decreased by twenty-nine percent. And I think this is important to note that we have not put in any water restrictions in Cold Springs. We do not enforce odd even watering days, we've not had to. Just to keep that in mind. And I, I know there's other regions in Washoe County that have had to do that. Our max water demand peaks about one thousand six hundred and eighty-nine acre feet for our existing customer base. And you'll see that it flatlines at two thousand and thirty-one. And we do not anticipate any other growth other than Stonegate, which is not reflected in this information. And if Stonegate is approved and moves forward with the annexation and is approved by the Public Utilities Commission, then we will re-adjust our numbers that will be reflected in our next IRP. And that's Integrated Resource Plan, the IRP, sorry, sometimes I speak into many acronyms. The protection and over pumping of the basin, this is critical on our next slide, sorry about that. All new areas or developments that are annexed are required, I'm going to reemphasize this, to provide, excuse me, a new water source or provide the water rights for their project. As we go through our analysis, and this is directly out of our IRP, which was filed in two thousand and twenty-four. You can see our existing water rights that we maintain in good standing in this basin. It is the two thousand four hundred and fifteen AFA. On the previous slide, I demonstrated that our max pump or peak demand will be one thousand six hundred and eighty-nine AFA with a surplus of seven hundred and twenty-six AFA. What is important is this is a dedicated allotment and that seven hundred and twenty-six acre feet cannot be redistributed to new development or anybody else in that basin. That is the conservation piece that is built in. And that has been a requirement by the Public Utilities Commission and also the State Engineer's Office. So I, I think that is important to be aware of, from a water management standpoint. And once again, the existing surplus or that capacity will not be used by any developer or Stonegate. They are required to bring their own. There have been questions about the groundwater levels in Cold Springs. So once again, this chart, as you go through, and I know it's very tight and tiny. But we did an update of, from two thousand and twenty-two, as you can see, to June of two thousand and twenty-five. The top line that I want to talk about is our well two, that's a monitoring well. So I just kind of want to use that as a, as a benchmark as I go through this. We all know that the aquifer recharges and is impacted by wet and dry years. We also know that treated effluent flows back into this basin. And we estimate about eighty percent of all interior water use recharges the basin. We know that seasonal pumping fluctuates, levels which is normal in all wells. Whether it's wells that we maintain or another utility maintains, this is a very common flow. The aquifer levels, excuse me, the last three years, you can see that we've had some changes, whether it's been wet or dry. And currently with this particular slide, we are only pumping, or I'm showing here the pumpage that is coming from our Cold Springs Basin, not our Long Valley Basin where we pump water into Cold Springs to serve customers also. So I'm going to quickly go through this slide. The top well, as I said, is a monitoring well, it is our well two. The next two wells that are in line are our well eight and our Van Dyke well, or excuse me, our well one and our Van Dyke well. And you can see that these wells are right in line and there is common communication due to their proximity to each other. And then you have on the bottom, the green is our well eight. What is very, very important about this is you can see the recharge and how the wells recover throughout the year. I really like this slide because it, prior to Stonegate, working on this project, I think there was a lot of unknowns in this basin of how the water interacted. Basically, the Cold Springs Basin is a bowl and White Lake is where everything flows down into. What is important in this particular slide, and I'm just going to jump right to the dashed line that's right across the middle. During the study that was done by Stonegate, starting in two thousand and twenty, going through this process with the state engineer. Prior to Great Basin being asked to be a part of this project, we did work with them because we were afraid, afraid of a lot of issues with the water importation. That was a water balancing of what was going to happen. As I said during the last presentation, we've been looking at this from a Swan Lake and a Silver Lake standpoint. What do you do with water that comes into your basin that is not exiting? And our first approach to this has been a water balance approach. We've advocated this since this project started back in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, we've not changed our position. We need to look at the water balance first. What came out of this study is that we know that in about in the middle of that lake, that there is like, there's a clay dike. And that clay dike slows the water moving from the north to the south. And there is some communication, but it is minimal. During the pumping testing, it was determined that at a high, high rate of over a thousand GPM, you would see communication. We do not anticipate that level of pumping, it's not required for this project. And so from us, there's a, a diminutive impact of water going between north and south. And, and it's very important to keep that in mind because that's how we have to manage this basin. That north and south separation is water from our northern portion that just builds up, builds up. And as Andy also discussed about bringing in the reuse line around helps with the water balance of this basin that we as a utility are excited about. I'm going to move into the next piece. And this piece to me is critical to answer questions about who pays for what. As you can see right now, the Stonegate infrastructure will tie together the north and south infrastructure for Great Basin over the long term. The blue lines represent the existing infrastructure today. As you can see, we do have the different wells that I just spoke of earlier on the graphs. That is our well eight, our well two, our well one and our Van Dyke well.
Hey, James, with all due respect, can we kind of?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Not a problem, Rob. Or Mr. Pierce, excuse me. There we go, the next one. I wanted to point this out, I'll go through to the last key items that I have. Phase one, when the developer, if they're approved, connects to our existing infrastructure, we're looking at three hundred and fourteen acre feet of water that would be utilized from groundwater resources that are currently developed today. The additional eight hundred and seventy-one that Andy spoke about, that is water that will have to be developed through spring or surface water sources. And if those water sources do not materialize, phase three would be the inner tie, which was the long-term connection to the Tamla Wholesale Pipeline that comes in out of the North Valleys. And on my, my last piece here. I'm just going to summarize really quickly. Before we accept a new development into any of our service territories, whether it's in Cold Springs, Spanish Springs or down south, we have to analyze and mitigate the impacts to our existing customers. New customers cannot pay for development, or excuse me, existing customers cannot pay for development. Development has to be paid for by the developer, that is a requirement of the Public Utilities Commission. Next, we have to make sure that the resource is available. We cannot connect a system that does not have the resource. And in both of these cases, in our evaluation, and as we continue to go through further approvals, we believe that it meets both of those criterias. Thank you. Sorry it took longer.
That's all good. At this time, I'd like to, because of the comments and questions and all that stuff, we're going to take a ten-minute break and then we're going to come back at, in ten minutes, thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call the meeting back to order. It's 8:05. We're a little bit late. So that was it for the presentations. So we're going to bring it back to the board for questions to the presenters. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the presenters?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have some questions. I guess I'll start with Jeff, since you're here, if I could ask you some questions.
Go ahead, Jeremy's got some.
Oh, please.
Hi, Jeremy, sorry, Commissioner Veltow. I just wanted to let you know that the IT folks at the building here have, I think, locked the bathrooms. There's a key card that Carla, our clerk, has. She has two cards, and I asked him to unlock them again. So hopefully that will happen. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
We heard a lot of public comment about data centers.
Quiet, everybody, quiet.
I'm trying to understand what will be required of any applicant trying to build a data center in this parcel of land. What are the, is there a right to build a data center by us approving what's before us tonight?
Jeff Foster, Associate Planner, City of Reno. So thank you, Commissioner Veltow, for the question. So a data center anywhere in the city of Reno, whether it's general commercial, mixed-use suburban, mixed-use urban, mixed-use downtown innovation district, industrial, industrial, commercial, mixed-use airport, or mixed employment, any of those zones requires a conditional use permit. So data centers are allowed in those zones, but every one that is applied for, it would undergo a conditional use permit process, which is, of course, a 65-day discretionary review process with public noticing, with a hearing by the Planning Commission. So no data centers would be allowed by right under the current framework for how the city of Reno analyzes data centers.
And I understand that the city of Reno has a joint meeting between the Reno Planning Commission and the City of Reno City Council on August, October 1. If, at that event, or at that meeting, for instance, the city were to prohibit data centers, would that apply to Stonegate if we approve this tonight?
If the city were to prohibit data centers, yes. Because the new zoning that would be allowed by the master plan land use designations that are currently being contemplated, the zoning, if the city all of a sudden allow, or prohibited data centers, then the applicant would be subject to the then zoning regulations in place. So if there are no more data centers allowed, they would no longer be able to, allowed to be, to apply for them.
Okay, so just to be clear, nothing we do tonight, if we vote in favor of this, will give data centers by right in this area?
Does not give any by right data center use, no.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions of the presenters? Go ahead.
Mr. Foster, thank you very much for your presentation. It was very enlightening. So anything that is done out in Stonegate will require a moron of approvals and processes that you have to go through in order to make it happen. From what your, your presentation said, doesn't matter. This is not carte blanche. This is, this is nothing. This is just, to Jeremy's point, just us looking at a very narrow scope of approval or denial. The city of Reno has approval of all building.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Jockman, I have a question. The scope of this question is in regards to the city of Reno growth and reinvestment framework. The item sort of pertains to residents that are in the county regarding flood management. So the, in my review of the materials, the, there's an existing Zone A FEMA floodplain that exists in White Lake. I noticed that some of the residents to the north are in that floodplain. My general question for you is this. With regard to this item that's here before us, would approval or denial of this item have any impact on that potential floodplain? Because I understand that there are some pieces of code that have implications with regard to what can be done to a flood that will occur in the future.
So you're speaking about parcels to the north of White Lake?
Yeah, so I noticed that along Village Parkway, the floodplain, the Zone A floodplain per FEMA exists, and it goes into some of those homes. So there are homes that exist there today that have to buy insurance by law, and they therefore bear cost. So obviously, this is in regard to flooding. This development that we're talking about is upstream of that. It's in the watershed. It's in. It's in Endor Hayek Lake. If we see another flood there, there could be a problem for many years. So I'm trying to understand if and how that might, this, this application might impact that.
So Commissioner Giacomo, I'm going to answer that in a couple of ways. First of all, the existing plan unit development, the development that's allowed under the existing PUD, the primarily residential, some commercial, some industrial, any development in that area, even if it was allowed by right or allowed under the plan unit development, when it went through the building permit review process, that issue would be looked at as a part of any individual building permit action. Okay, so the flooding issue is always going to be looked at, even if there's not an entitlement that is, that the development is contingent upon, even just something that could go straight to building permit, would be looked at in terms of its impact on flooding. So in the north retention and retention is required at a 1.3 to 1 ratio, which is to say that it requires more onsite storage and to mitigate potential flooding impacts. And so even
So it goes beyond, it goes beyond just mitigating, though? If it's 1.3?
Right, right, yeah, to, yeah, correct, even, even beyond 1.3. So it requires more than, 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 you know, than a 1, than 1 to 1, right?
So, but today would effectively be 1 to 1. I know you said that the initial PUD that was approved, obviously, it hasn't been built, and we've heard that numerous times from the applicant, that that's not financially feasible for them. So it's been nearly 10 years. I think it's safe to say that that's not going to occur. Obviously, they're here requesting something else.
Right.
So in relation to what exists there today, which is raw land that drains into White Lake, and that's a lake that has a clay base, so it's very hard for the water to go away. It's Endor Hayek, so the water's not going to go away unless it evaporates.
Right.
I have concerns about flooding there. So can you explain a little bit more about this 1.3 to 1 ratio and what that might mean for the resulting flood that
Right, so
It's a 100-year flood, so it likely will occur at some point in the future.
So effectively, what happens is with the development of the site, again, whether it's under the PUD or under development that would be allowed under the contemplated master plan and zoning, the development, any development that, as it comes through the pipeline, is going to be required to retain and detain onsite at a ratio of 1.3 to 1. What that means is that the downstream impacts are reduced as a, as a, as a result of the development. So without any kind of development plan that, at a building permit phase, without any of those improvements, the existing Wild West type of conditions that are, that are out there, the flooding that can occur will continue to occur, but with a developed condition, with the requirements that would be coming in through the entitlement review process and the building permit process, that would have a downstream effect of reducing the potential flooding in the area that you're talking about on the north side of White Lake.
Okay.
So, and, and again, part of this process is cleaning up, in effect, kind of what's happening out there already. You have undersized culverts running underneath 395, things like that. So when, with a development plan in place, those things, in consultation with NDOT, in consultation with the county and the city of Reno, that flooding condition will be reduced as a result of having development to put that into place.
Okay, so you're telling me that the flooding, the future flood will be reduced if development occurs upstream of White Lake, which is in this watershed?
Yes, that is correct.
It probably doesn't matter what type of development, but it needs to be developed regarding, with regard to this code?
And that's, and that's precisely my point about saying that, whether it's the PUD or this, that it takes the development in order to have those improvements take place.
So if we obviously make a motion in favor of this, that would allow the, would it be fair to assume that that would allow the development to occur, which would be held to that additional retention requirement, which would improve or lessen the impact of that future flood?
On nearby properties that are subject to the flooding. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just have a follow-up question. Approximately how much reduction of flooding would occur with this development? Do you have those numbers?
I don't have those numbers, and, and of course, that's subject to the amount of impervious surface and the actual development plan that comes forward. It's so, and I'm not an engineer, and I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn last night. So I, I'm woefully short on being able to answer with precision on that.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the presenters? How about, oh, go ahead, go ahead. Can you grab the microphone?
A lot of discussion is, here tonight has been about water, availability of water, and these types of issues, as I understand it now, will be mitigated in the approval process of the permit and the special use permit. Is that correct?
We would, we would certainly characterize the water usage from any potential development that comes through, whether it's at an entitlement, like a conditional use permit, or at the building permit phase.
Okay.
At, at the end of the day, though, the, the, without a water will serve, i.e. from Great Basin Water Company, no development gets built, even if it's approved at an entitlement phase.
So it could be stopped right there.
It can be stopped. If there's no, if there's no water will serve, it's not, it's not getting a building permit.
It is a regional resource, a limited resource, actually. And I don't want to get involved with approving something that jeopardizes the availability of drinking water for the region. And as long as there's enough checks and balances back and forth by the water company, by the city, through the special use permit, by the building department with the issuance of the permit, then the risk is, is reduced. And the number of quote, data centers that can be built is, is again, subject to the water availability, and it doesn't have to get approved
That is correct.
by the city. Okay, you're going to scold me now?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got, I've got one question for you. As far as population growth in the RC9, it, in your Reno master plan, it states that there needs to be a vibrant neighborhood center within 4.1 area of the master plan. Is that something that's going to be looked at if, if we approve this going forward?
So Section 4.1, what's the header for that? What's the?
That's the underpopulation growth.
Okay, so your question is, will there be a vibrant neighborhood center?
They're going, and, well, yeah, going on, it says that there needs to be a vibrant neighborhood center, and it must include an address affordable and workforce housing, which, which is met by Guiding Principle 4.
Okay. So, so we look at, when we go through an entitlement review, we look at the potential conformance of the proposed request. We filter that through the master plan, right? When I filtered the Stonegate Plan Unit, or sorry, not the Plan Unit Development, I wasn't around at that point in time, when I filtered the current request through the master plan, I came up with at least 15 goals and policies from the master plan that are in support of the proposed request. I don't recall if 4.1 is one of them, but based on the language that you're talking about, I wouldn't have said that that one would be an applicable goal or policy. The, the bar is, is substantial conformance. So a given entitlement or discretionary review action does not require compliance with 100% of the goals and policies, because obviously, nothing could comply, you know, with 100%, right? So we look at, does it, does it in general have substantial conformance? And it was my take, and ultimately, the take of the city council, that, that the proposed request does substantially conform with the master plan. As a part of subsequent entitlement reviews, could we look at, whether it's a tentative map process or whether it's a conditional use permit or something, could we look at some of those things and request, you know, maybe some changes to a project design to have more of a, you know, in this particular case, a vibrant neighborhood center? Sure, absolutely. But that wasn't one that was directly applicable to the request as is.
Okay. And then under your regional form, it states that you need to seek and to establish and emphasize desired growth pattern by limiting premature expansion of development in undeveloped areas and reserved neighborhoods, and revitalize urban areas. I'm assuming that's all going to be looked at also?
Yes, yeah. I mean, again, the, well, not, I shouldn't say again, because I didn't say this already. The Stonegate PUD was, was already, you know, it was already anticipated there was going to be growth in this area. It's a different type of growth now. It's industrial versus primarily residential. But yes, that, that is an issue that has come into consideration here.
Just want to make sure to make the right decision here. Just looking at your master plan and some of the things and
Sure.
Is this one of the growth tiers where the city wants to prioritize development of industrial? Or, because I couldn't find that on any of your
As far as a specific direction to prioritize industrial development in the Gold Springs area?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of a specific directive or policy or anything along those lines, no.
Okay. All right. I'll stop. Go ahead, yes.
Yes, another comment that is made during the presentation, I don't know if you made it or somebody else made, that all costs associated with the development, back on the data centers, would have to be borne by the applicant. Does that include power?
Yes.
So
So for
They have to have their own power plant.
Not necessarily their own power plant, but, so the city of Reno, when we are looking at a project, we, there's not a specific criteria about the amount of water or the amount of power. They just have to be able to get a will serve letter from NV Energy or TMA or Great Basin Water Company. So, but I can, I can, as a point of reference, for the web data center, there was a substation that was approved 1,800 feet from the web data center. I don't remember the exact distance, but the developer for the web data center was part of the, they, they were paying for the
Substation.
That substation. So as an example of infrastructure being the requi, the cost for infrastructure being borne by the developers, not by the ratepayers, not by the existing ratepayers.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, go ahead.
Commissioner Lazarewski, question for staff. With regard to the conformance of the, the first policy, population growth.
Yes.
You make a straightforward explanation that currently there are 46,000 potential approved units in Tier 2. Our population growth models only suggest that total need in the map timeline to be 26,000. Obviously, no one project would eliminate 20,000 potential units from the housing future growth base, but this one change looks at eliminating like 8% of the total future growth in Tier 2. Do we have a standard for how much removing of future housing to accommodate population growth would be non-conforming with that goal?
Jeremy Smith, the record is great question. I don't think, no, we've never previously developed any sort of standard about the number of units that would be removed. Our work is basically tracking how development manifests in the community in those tiers through our, every two years, doing our consensus forecast process. And so that's how we learn. We look both at, in three ways. We look back five years, look back 10 years, look back 20 years, to see how the locate, the spatial location of housing unit growth is changing. And what we've seen is that about 4% to 5% over the past couple cycles of doing that, it's been moving into the two core-oriented regional land designations of the mixed-use core and Tier 1. And so if that trend were to continue, that would, that would remove burden and demand from Tier 2. So I don't have a standard, but the directionality that it's creeping is a couple percent into the core. And that does support our prioritization of what we want to see development.
Thank you. I got one more question for, for you, sir. Do you guys in your master plan take the county master plan into consideration when you make changes to certain things like this right here? Would you guys consider the county master plan also? Or are you just going to be looking at the city master plan?
I'm not sure I understand the question. So when we make changes?
So like this, we're, we're being asked to change it from residential to industrial. So when, if this gets approved, when the developer comes to you and asks, say, I want XYZ, do you take the county's master plan into consideration at all? Because you have to cross county lines to get to the city.
I would say not explicitly. The development review process at the city does factor in input from outside agencies, as well as our own departments, of course. So Wausau County Community Development is always welcome to provide comments. And in fact, on this particular application, did provide a comment. Trevor Lloyd provided a comment to me, and I referenced it in my presentation in terms of the compatibility with that 100-foot-wide PGOS buffer adjacent to the residentially-zoned parcels in the county to the north of the industrial area. Did provide a comment to that effect, that it, that it met their requirement or their standard. So we would, we would certainly take input from the county, you know, with respect to any development in that area. But it's not a explicit kind of analysis of the county's master plan as a part of our process.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because the county master plan says that we need 40,000 additional housing units by 2042. Calls it out in the vision 2040 master plan. So anyways, do we have any more questions? Go ahead.
I understand that the county engineer might be available for questions, Jeremy. Is that correct? So seeing as those, the city of Reno is formerly the applicant on this, and my, my line of questioning previously had impact on the county residents, I'm, I'm curious if you have any questions or thoughts or regards to what the city of Reno just told us regarding this retention factor that would be applied to development in this location? Because it sounds like it would have a substantial impact on county residents.
For the record, Dwayne Smith, I'm the Director of Engineering Capital Projects, and I so serve as a county engineer. So you're speaking directly to the flood potential issues, which is certainly something that we are all concerned about through both existing developments and for new developments. Just to add a little bit of specific detail, what the gentleman here mentioned before is one part of the equation. New development is conditioned with a 1.3 to 1 volumetric requirement for onsite retention-detention. This is something that the city of Reno and Wausau County both abide by. I want to also mention that we have a further requirement, 1.3 to 1 for volumetric mitigation for fill material placed within FEMA floodplanes. So we have the two components, onsite, and we also have to recognize that under FEMA's rules and requirements that we all administer through our development codes, development can occur within FEMA-designated floodplanes. It is highly regulated, and this additional 1.3 to 1 volumetric mitigation requirement is layered on top of that. So let's talk for just a second about a new development that might go in. Not only do they have to address their reduced impervious surface area, increasing the impervious surface area, and they have to address that onsite, onsite stormwater management through the increased retention-detention requirements that we all follow, and we all also follow the Tricameta's regional drainage manual requirements, which these are now part of. But if that development also impacts a FEMA floodplain, which this is, this project is located in a closed hydro basin, we all know the challenges that accompany closed hydro basins. And so we know that that development has potential, any And so we know that that development has potential, any development, I should say, has potential to impact that FEMA-designated floodplain. By placing fill material within that floodplain, they have that further requirement to actually remove more material to reduce that potential impact by lowering the water surface area. That requirement is that 1.3 to 1 for volumetric mitigation for any fill material placed within FEMA-designated floodplains.
So just so I make sure I'm understanding that correctly, this, you know, this could, these lakes that are Andor Haak, Silver Lake, Swan Lake, White Lake, with this ratio and with the added ability for those parcels in development to retain that water, would it be fair to say that we're in that future flood event at White Lake, we're taking water out of that, and then some of it's being retained onsite for this development, thereby lessening the future flood that would occur at that location?
The onsite stormwater management requirement is there, and it's designed and anticipated and expected to help reduce that flood potential.
Thank you.
The additional 1.3 to 1 volumetric mitigation requirement onsite further addresses those additional concerns specifically within closed basin areas. The 1.3 to 1 volumetric mitigation for development within FEMA-designated floodplains is also a further requirement to add, again, within closed basins, that additional protection for the existing and future residents.
Anybody else here have any questions? All right, let's go online. Do we have any board members online?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm going to wait for a discussion, and I guess that will happen after public comment.
Yeah, we're going to go to public comment if there's no questions from the presenters, and then we'll discuss.
William Mantle.
Good evening, thank you for having me. So my public comment has morphed a little bit after seeing these presentations and trying to digest all of that and then regurgitate it. First off, our promises. We're here because this started off as a promise of one regional plan that is now being affected by a master plan amendment to change that promise to a different promise. And in hearing in the representative's presentation, I heard a lot of other promises of things that may come to be, that they think would make them better regional partners, that sound really good, but still at this stage, we're at promises. And what predicated this entire master plan amendment was the infeasibility of the cost of the current plan, is what I heard. Now, I've seen no evidence, no supporting material, no financial numbering to suggest why this is suddenly impossible to do. Because what I'm hearing behind me from the general consensus of the public comments so far is that they actually are really okay with the current plan in place. And now I'm even hearing that there's enough water resources feasibly to make sure that we have at least 2,500 AFA available to make sure that those homes, as currently planned, could proceed. But that all makes sense because this plan has already been pre-approved, and we're talking about the master plan amendment. Now, back in 2018, there was a similar, I guess in size, development that was being considered around the same time. You might have been familiar with it, which is now Talis Valley. It's down in South Reno in a floodplain on the corner of Veterans and South Meadows. And I think this is seven years going on since they've been approved. They just started with their actual development of their 4,000, 3,900, whatever, homes that they're doing. So somehow, I'm seeing a different developer have the capacity to produce the homes that are desirable in this place in this way, with a diversity of housing that's been promised, which we're losing completely of within this master plan amendment, and reducing considerably the suburban mixed-use quadrants that could be beneficial to not just this PUD, but the entire surrounding community. And if you read the public comment that I submitted in writing, where I consider population growth, regional forum, public facilities, natural resources, and regional coordination, I really don't understand how, when you're hearing from the representatives of the region behind me, which are all the public commenters who actually will live in this region, they're saying they don't feel like it conforms. They don't feel like this is the view and the way forward for the region. And if you were to deny this master plan amendment tonight, what would their possible next step be? To figure it out or give it up?
Wendy Burley.
I don't envy your jobs at all. You know, we came here because we think that we actually have some sway or that what you say, what we say to you matters. And what we heard from the city of Reno and from the representatives is that you meet all of the points and all of the rules and all of the regulations and all of the planning things, and they've gone through and checked all their boxes and made sure that it all works. And yet, they don't live where we all live. And, you know, everybody has an answer for each one of our concerns, whether it's water or higher utility bills because they're going to use so much utility, or just the traffic. And I think because there was so much complaint every time there's a development about traffic, that people forget that that's not our only consideration. It's actually how we move in and out of our valley. And what you might not understand, if you don't live in the North Valleys, is that our Anderson Hill literally is impassable sometimes. And I looked it up, and it looks like it's 2030 to 2050 before we're going to have any improvement for that unwrap, off wrap, unwrap, off wrap that's going to supposedly be lengthened for these trucks. Here's the problem. We don't build warehouses the way we used to. We build warehouses in three months. Three months. That whole entire warehouse thing could be built out. We saw, you can drive along Old 395 right now, and the minute a sign goes up and there's a public comment, within three months, there's a new warehouse. The traffic from those trucks will make it impossible for people who live off of Village Parkway to actually commute to their jobs. And what I'd like to talk about now is the jobs that you guys keep glorifying and thinking are so wonderful. I just looked up, I just looked up the actual base salary at PetSmart that's out there, a warehouse that's there now, and Uline, which is a higher-paying job. It's $23 an hour for Uline, and it's 18 for PetSmart. Do you think you can buy a house with that kind of salary? No, you can't buy a house. So they built apartments out there, and those apartments now have children and require resources, and the only person who won was the people who built, who's built all those apartments out there. We're not adding to anything that does anything for public good here. And we keep telling you that we're not. But it's kind of like the Lorax, you know, who's going to speak for the trees? You guys did not listen closely about how important that particular last little bit of land that is a natural grassland that holds water and then redistributes it as it floods. I just, don't forget the antelope or the Peterson collared herd, because they're not going to stay on 400 acres just because you designate it.
Martha Swenson.
Good evening, everybody. I am here to speak to you today, and I think the first thing I want to touch on based on the presentations that I heard is housing. Nevada rig's second in the nation for cost burden renters, behind only Florida, and fifth in the country for states with the most excessively cost burden homeowners. So we're looking at a project that's gone from 5,000 homes, and it just keeps going down. So essentially, the reason that the developers are saying that this is happening is they cannot afford to develop the houses that were promised. Data centers look like an easy investment for them. Now, they may be, but I would argue that they're not a sustainable, long-term investment for the community. The type of jobs that they create and the number of jobs that they create are not something that is going to be long-term. Now, you might look at some construction jobs, short-term. You might look at some investment from potential AI growth, but is that really sustainable? Is that the vision of the future that you want to see? I would argue no. I think that we need more space for people, and I think that that's incredibly apparent in the master plan. It's apparent in the statistics. You look everywhere, you can see people need a place to live. And I think that's really driving a lot of the outrage behind this, is just the promise and then the lack of follow-through. Especially when, you know, they keep saying, oh, it's going to bring jobs, but they don't say how. They say that, let's see, they say that they're going to address the needs of the water and the electricity and the infrastructure, but they do not give a pathway to how. You know, it's Charlie Brown pulling away the football. Here's 5,000 homes, whoops, nope. Anyways, I don't think it's a good idea.
Rose Waterbeak.
Good evening. My name's Rosie Walterbeak. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a 23-year Reno resident, and after the presentations, I unequivocally ask you to vote no on those proposed changes. It still appears to me after the presentation, there hasn't been enough sufficient research, thought, and planning related to the new proposal. So when approved in 2016, as you heard, it included a fire and public safety service agreement, and as part of this, Stonegate would provide a fire station, a fire engine, a brush truck, and an ambulance. So I didn't see that in the PowerPoint. So approving this proposal would do away with that entirely. Very troubling, especially since the Reno Fire Chief has expressed his concern about elimination of the agreement, and has said that existing Reno Fire Department resources would not meet RFD standards and not adequate to serve any development. There's also going to be delayed fire response. As we speak, there is a fire. We heard about that earlier from the homeowners. Emergency medical service and REMZA would be delayed. And lastly, the Reno Police has expressed concerns. The data center is going to make it worse because they're very unique with fire risks and threats to the safety of firefighters and anybody in that building area. Talking about water, there's water-related issues associated with this project. So as we sit here now, the Western Regional Water Commission and TMA, Trucumeta's Water Authority, are currently working with experts to study that impact of development on the Cold Springs water that was referenced as the backup plan. So the questions in the second presentation, so the questions involved go beyond water supply and how much wastewater can be processed. There's been other issues identified by TMA, and really looking at that groundwater impact and the wells. I know there was the one expert here, but the water study's just started, it's not done. So it seems a little reckless to approve it when there's other experts that are looking at this unique basin. So when you look at the data centers and the water use, they're asking for a huge increase to over 900 acres. So doing the math, even if only 15% is dedicated to data centers, that's still over 250 acres. So it's going to be, it doesn't seem rational to believe that it will decrease the amount of water consumption and the amount of wastewater. So the pumping and the water importation, as a result from this proposed rezoning, raises serious concerns about impact to the homeowners, the local wells, the ranch, the aquifer sustainability, and potential contamination. So I believe it's imperative that you, in the regional planning board, engage in responsible, informed planning that benefits and protects the health and welfare of area residences. Thank you for your time.
Sandy Roth.
Hello, my name is Sandy Roth, and I'm here to urge you to reject Stonegate's new proposal, their most recent one. I want to address a few things that have been raised. First of all, while in theory, it's true that approval of the proposal doesn't necessarily mean data centers, and they'll have to jump through some hoops, I'm not aware of any data centers the city has rejected, and there aren't guidelines for data centers. It's true that they will need a will serve letter for water, but that's not going to address the majority of water issues. I also want to talk about the eight acre feet that was raised by Mr. Foster earlier to suggest that, oh, water isn't a concern these days. Those eight acre feet, first of all, not sure it really is eight acre feet, but that was for a really small data center. And the size of the data centers we're talking about in Stonegate would dwarf that. It would use a lot of water. And there are various kinds of water systems that data centers can use, and we don't restrict them at all, unlike other parts of the state and other parts of the country. They could use evaporative cooling, and the water would just go away. And it's absolutely not true that data centers would have to pay for their cost of the power generation infrastructure. A lot of those costs, a lot, will be passed on to residential customers and other businesses. I also want to address this whole myth of the great jobs. Data centers provide very few jobs, given their industrial footprints, very few. And that's not going to stimulate the local economy. And then finally, I want to come back to what was just mentioned with the elimination of the fire services and health services agreement that currently exists. If you approve this plan, that goes away. The fire engine goes away, the fire station goes away, the brush truck goes away, the ambulance goes away. The Fire Chief has expressed his concern. He says that no matter what you do with Stonegate at this point, if you do away with those services, they cannot support, they don't have adequate resources to deal with that community. They also say that because of the wildfire area, the brush around Stonegate, that they would have challenges addressing wildfires there. We've had a few wildfires in the last few days. Why are you considering doing away with this agreement? It makes no sense. Engage in rational, fact-based planning for the benefit of our residents and our current businesses. Thank you.
Robin Palmer.
Good evening, Robin Palmer, climate and community advocate. First, to address the commissioner's question, no project pays for new generation of power. Ratepayers pay for new power generation, new power plants that a project might require. In preparing my public comment, I was reminded that we are on lands that were once under the stewardship of the Northern Paiute, Western Shoshone, and Wausau tribes. We can benefit from the wisdom of our Native American brothers and sisters. I refer to the Seventh Generation Principle from the founding document of the Iroquois Confederacy, first recorded in the late 1100s. The principle emphasizes the importance of considering the impact of decisions on future generations, and is based on the ancient Iroquois philosophy that quote, "In our every deliberation, we must consider the impact of our decisions on the next seven generations." Today, the Seventh Generation Principle is applied to tribal decisions about energy, water, and natural resources to ensure those decisions are sustainable for seven generations. Tonight's meeting packet includes a letter dated May 25 from Western Regional Water Commission that states WRWC has contracted for an analysis of surface water, groundwater, water quality, and water use in the Cold Springs basin to investigate water volume entering and exiting the basin due to future development, and assess impact on the groundwater aquifer. The packet does not suggest that this analysis has been completed. I encourage the planning commission to not make any decisions in the con... I encourage the Planning Commission to not make any decisions in the conformance review of the Stonegate development until the WRWC analysis is completed and to await the outcome of the community conversation, August 20th, to review the planning agency's role in the energy sector. And just in case Stonegate considers data center development on their industrial acreage, the joint meeting between Reno Planning Commission and Reno City Council on October 1. A reckless decision will have a detrimental impact on the current residents of the Cold Springs area as well as future generations. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for your service.
Hello, my name is Christopher Mullen. I'm a resident of Warford and North Valleys area. And first, I'd like to acknowledge all the due diligence that the public commentators and the commission has done for this meeting, and also the native tribes that have inhabited this land for generations that we're now discussing the use of. My public comment has changed from what I started due to like all the great facts that were brought forwards. And so I just want to address a couple of points. Water that is used by potential use of data centers on this land, which will most likely increase, is due to the fact that industrial zoning is more readily, more, and I suppose in most people's mind, ensued towards the construction of data centers versus like mixed-use zoning, which you have to then consider residential and our uses around it versus industrial. It may require more oversight initially, but it is more, excuse me, I'm very tired. The point I want to get to is that the water lost through the evaporation of the cooling of data centers, which is the most likely form of cooling that without regulation that industries will push forward just due to the low cost of entry, is completely lost from the water system versus that of like residential use where the water use is largely recycled and reintroduced in the system after treatment. So we may not have the water right now to allocate towards industrial use, especially for that of, especially for that of data centers. But the question is like with the current climate and changing climate, will we have those resources in the future? And I'm not sure about that. And I feel like we need to take a longer generational approach to how we view our resources and how climate change will affect them. Next point is employment. Data centers analyzed by this commission, I remember earlier this year analyzing specifically employment with data centers, you showed that it was the lowest employment per acreage. And with 250 of the 923 of industrial areas already earmarked for data centers, I have to question how many jobs are actually created? Because data centers, the type of amount of jobs that we're talking about is like tens of jobs at most. So I don't know where like the thousands of jobs or the massive increase is coming from. And last issue, it's personal, so I'll be real quick about it, is like this feels like really bad urban design. Is a mixed-use zone areas that are very well needed in like the North Valleys areas right now, at least for me, like all the amenities, all the community spaces I need to function, I have to drive like 17, 20 minutes, especially even longer during traffic hours too. So thank you for your consideration, and I hope you oppose the Stonegate proposal.
Good evening. First off, I want to thank you for your service to this community and working so hard on planning and development in our area.
Will you please state your name for the...
My name is Kathy Folkerson, and I'm asking you to vote no on the Stonegate amendment to the master plan. The Planning Board should be planning wisely for the benefit of our communities, including residents and businesses. Our region's the fastest warming area in the country, and I'm especially concerned about water. We do not have a lot of water. We're growing, and the Cold Springs area has experienced drought conditions for most of the last 25 years. Water's an absolutely critical resource to consider here, along with how it's used and how its use and importation would affect residents and our services and natural resources. I understand that the Western Regional Water Commission and TMA are currently working with experts to study the development, the impact of development on the Cold Springs water basin. The questions involved go beyond water demand, water supply, and how much wastewater can be processed. Although the water study has begun, it has not been completed. And as stated by the gentleman from the Nexus Water Group, he said there are a lot of unknowns with regard to the Cold Springs water basin. As a result, it seems reckless to approve this amendment before that study is done. I'm especially concerned, though, about this development plan that changes a planned community to 52% industrial and also includes the loss of multifamily dwellings. It will be only a small amount of single-family houses. My concern is that it seems there's no real planning to create thriving communities for both people and business. It seems that whatever a developer wants, the developer will get as long as there's substantial conformance with the regulations in the master plan. When will we look at where and what businesses will be developed? What type of housing? What type of industries will be built? And when will we require developers to include a percentage of affordable housing when they build housing? Developers won't do it voluntarily, and we need affordable housing. I'm just here to say that we need more responsible and fact-based planning than this project. Please vote no. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Steve Rekia. We've heard a lot about how this is a bait-and-switch thing. Don't do it. That aroused my suspicions. Then I heard that we were all going to live happily ever after. We're going to have jobs. There's lots of water, plenty of power, no problem. Remember, when you were a kid, essentially every fairy tale you heard ended in, and they lived happily ever after. Keep that in mind, okay? There are some things we're not hearing. How far back do the water table and water availability records go? Are we looking at five years, 10 years, 100 years? I don't know. But if I'm looking at five years back, I don't want to make projections for the next 50 or 100 years. And what's the deal with the data center tax breaks? Haven't heard about that. Somebody's got to pay taxes here. Guess who's doing it? Okay, so, the water guy. He says the water must be brought to the project by the developer. How about power? Envy Energy is going to be glad to burn lots of natural gas. Do we require solar panels on the roofs? Do we require storage batteries? Hey, we don't require anything, okay? Nada, zero, nothing. Why not? We've heard also, don't worry about power, the developer pays for the whole work, substations, transmissions, as Ms. Palmer mentioned. How about those natural gas power plants? Who's paying for those? And how about the fires caused by the transmission lines, huh? Who's going to be breathing that air? Who's going to be paying to put out those fires? And is there going to be any water used to put out those fires? We didn't hear anything about that. I don't know if you remember the fires of 2021 and 2022. The air quality indexes in my neighborhood here in Reno, where I've been living since my beard was bright orange, were up in the 400s, 500s, 600s. Hey, how about that fire station in the plant? Poof, it's gone. What about that? Who's going to pay for a fire station, huh? Me, I guess, huh? What's the rush here? Operators are standing by until midnight. Call the number on your screen. What's the deal? Why not set state, regional, and local requirements for data centers first?
I think that would be me. My name is Donna Keats. I don't know, did I have this mic in the right spot? I want to, I don't live in Cold Springs. I actually live downtown. But I've been involved with the City of Reno and their decision-making for 25 years. And I can tell you that it's not helpful to depend on their later regulations after you change the zoning to get it right. The data center argument that was at council, council members were told that they couldn't prohibit it with the CUP, even though it wasn't appropriate. They could only just make some conditions, but since the city has no outlines for how to do that, that never happened. So I just want to mention something about smoke and mirrors, which you've heard a lot of tonight. This big increase in jobs, increase in all the things, the decreases in other things have all been presented to you as if they're a really good, great, wonderful thing compared to the existing PUD. But those are the same arguments that they used to change it to the existing PUD. So hmm, that's an interesting thing. And to compare this with what used to exist 20 years ago is ridiculous. Life is different now, 20 years later. We need housing. That's why we're trying to acquire Bureau of Land Management land to develop, because we don't have enough land for, guess what, housing. So if we're going to get jobs, which we need, we need to have regional centers, we need populations to be happy, we need people to be able to speak to each other, shop locally, not do all this driving. This is what all these people have been telling you. So you have the opportunity to change that. You have, what, five findings you need to make? I believe you can't make them. If you cut straight to the finding, public facilities, there's no more, you know, you have this one, public facilities and services. There's no expansion of public facilities and services, except possibly an off-ramp for industrial trucks in sometime before 2050. You can't make that finding. You've got regional form. You have this sprawling industrial area that's completely contrary to your regional plan compact growth policy. You can't make that finding either, if you really think about what they're doing. Population growth, you're shifting away from housing-forward development. So what about the long-term employment balance that's happening? So you have a few people up here that have no place to go, nothing to do. You're not helping them. They're here to tell you how they're not helping them. You have natural resources problems here that you shouldn't make that finding either because you have urban heat contributions, threats to the environment. You can't make protection of natural resources when you have that much industrial sprawl? Sprawl, not compact, not good jobs, not high-quality, high-paying jobs. Can't make that finding. You can't make regional, your regional coordination finding either because this whole process has lacked transparency. It's a total bait-and-switch. I could take all that data you heard, it's all future speak. The population numbers, the projections, it's future speak. It's what we do to plan. But we don't know what's going to be built because they're not telling you what's going to be built. They're just telling you they want a sprawling industrial area, not saying they're going to do nice little commercial developments or smaller industrial things that people want and need. So I hope you're the last resource. Please listen to the population that's talking to you. You can't make the findings.
Hello, Becky Flannery, for the record. I did not come with all the facts and statistics that all these people have come with, but I can tell you as a local and a community member of Cold Springs, they promised, you know, that if they bring warehouses, they're going to protect the native species. Well, how's it being protected from all the pollutants being put out by the warehouses and the semi-trucks? Another one I have, if they do build all these, where are the people going to live? My children can't even, I'm born and raised here. My kids can't even afford to live here. We don't need more jobs. We need places for people to live. We need the cost of housing to decrease dramatically. There's no buses that go out to Cold Springs. So if all the people coming there, what if they don't have a car? How are they getting to work? What if their car breaks down? How are they getting to work? There's no public transportation. I also have questions, you know, they said, oh, the developer's going to pay for the cost of the water, and they're going to pay for the Envy Energy, but really, we're the ones that pay for it. We get the rate increases. They're not receiving those increases. We are, to be able to build for them. So I think, and just, this is a horrible, horrible change of plan. We are full of industrial in the valleys, inundated. They're everywhere. We don't got a new grocery store. I think I've said this at the last thing. We have not received any benefits to our community. And you know what the people of Cold Springs want? They would just be happy at the grocery store, laundromat, some little things to do in the community. They've taken away the resources, they've given us no actual benefits, except for jobs, which they don't even know what jobs are going to be there. So how are you promising jobs when you have no clue what you're even building? And even if it was data centers, that's like 10 jobs each. Where are they getting the numbers? Where's the factual numbers coming from that they are presenting? And I would really like them to actually maybe come and try this again with an actual plan and an actual presentation that actually benefits our community and our whole city because we don't really need more semi-trucks on the road. It's already a problem going up the hills, Anderson, through the whole valleys. So we really, really need to take a hard stop on this, sit back, and maybe let them come back and try again with a better plan or give us back the other one. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ebert, for the record, I have a lot of notes, so I'll try to be very quick. I just want to call out, first thing is, we talk a lot about amenities in the North Valleys, and I wrote down the list of things that we consider amenities. One is a fire station. Another is a police station. Another is schools, water, roads, places to shop for groceries, and parks and open spaces. Does that sound like luxuries? Does that sound like amenities to anybody here? Police station. RPD did an operation in the North Valleys on Stead, Moya, and now I'm drawing a blank in other street for four days in July, and they issued 203 citations because we need more enforcement in that area. People are not following traffic laws because we don't have enough law enforcement out there. You know what would help? If we had a police station in the North Valleys, a police presence. We had three fires over the weekend. You know, it would help with that situation if we had a fire station out there. We have two lanes getting into that Cold Springs area. If we have a major fire event, I really appreciate that we have Truckee Meadows Fire willing to do an aid agreement with us, but it might be more than just the resources out there could handle, and we might not be able to get fire trucks to that area. That is a very real possibility, and that weekend, last weekend, should have opened everyone's eyes to that. There's also a distinction between industrial and industrial-commercial zoning. This applicant has asked for industrial zoning. The difference between industrial and industrial-commercial is a restriction to a warehouse or square footage maximum of 500,000 square foot. This developer wants to be able to build warehouses larger than 500,000 square foot. Just try to visualize what that looks like. I also would like to know if you have any information on acreage that would be included in these areas that would require cuts and fills that would need to come to council or disturbance of major drainage ways? How many areas would be affected by that, that it would even need to come to council? It's a pretty large area. Parks and open spaces, how much of that acreage is in a dry lake bed in Whites Lake right now? I'd like to see that map again and see how much of that open space is a dry lake bed that could be gone in a wet winter. I also have, you know, some information about different things if you could just bear with me here, you know? Again, fire station, police station, 203 citations, four arrests on Moya, Stead, and Silver Lake. Those are our major routes for trucks as well. Would you guys allow me to have more time? Would you guys allow me to have more time as the city councilman representative since we did, you know, a second meeting to allow the applicant to have a presentation and answer questions? No? Okay, we can't, we can't bend the rules there.
Counsel says no.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much. Oh, I would also like to talk about the schools, but I guess I'll do it at the end of public comment.
Antoni Costano.
Anton?
Yes, sorry about that.
Been to a lot of these regarding this situation and what they're planning on doing, and I've looked at a lot of different stuff.
Just please state your name for the record.
Okay, Anton Lebard. I was born and raised here in Reno. I've called Cold Springs home for 17 years, been out there for a long time. Actually worked for the water company for eight years out there, so I know a little bit about that out there. And I, I want to keep it simple with the water. I think that their water rights are there. I think that they can do it, but what's the best use of those water rights? What's the best use of that water? Is it for a PUD that was planned for the people to drink or for an, like, a industry? For, you know, data centers and stuff like that? Think about it for the future. Think about what the best use of that area is. That goes with the original PUD as well. I'm going to read a couple of things if I can get through it and not get too nervous. I'm not a big public speaker, but I'll give it my best. First, we were told, and I quote, "This has been years in the making by Reno Mayor Hillary." And to continue her quote, "This isn't something, some piece of paper that comes across our desk and we vote. It's not easy. We all agree Reno is really special, is a real special place, and we all want to live here." That was for the original PUD. This other one has been rushed. It hasn't been vetted like the original PUD. Things have been changed, things that aren't going to help the community. Cold Springs, there's about 50 something, maybe 60 people. They probably represent thousands that are in Cold Springs that do not like this, and we are trying to tell you, we do not like this. We see the future, and the future is growth and housing for people so that they can afford it, not in a, a commercial or industry where it's not going to build that community. The fire departments, the fire stations, the, the police, the things we really need or asking for, they will find a way, someone will find a way to pay for this and get this done. I'm going to go into my second. The original Stonegate construction said that it would have over eight miles of trails, 50 acres of public land. That community center was beautiful. It would be good for the community. It would build that community. Originally, it would gift the Washoe County School District parcels of land to use for schools for future. Number four, Stonegate was originally prepared to construct onsite and offsite water supplies. That's with Truckee Meadow Water. They were going to, they were going to do a loop system. Those are the best systems. James knows that, I know that, a lot of people. That will happen regardless in what we choose, but what is the best use of that area? And they decided a long time ago when they annexed it Reno, that that best use was for housing. Thank you.
Kate Villard, for the record. There have been some tough acts to follow, but anyway, I applaud everybody. They picked up on some of the same points that I also had. I don't have any faith in developer support. There were so many things that were thrown out there, so many statistics presented as facts, and they weren't facts, they were just projections. They were wishful thinking, and it really concerns me that we're not seeing the actual data to back it up. And I'm sitting back there listening, thinking, how could it be that these data centers are so good now they don't use water? It says an average-sized data center, a modern one, uses 300,000 to 1.5 million gallons per day, and if it doesn't, it uses electricity. And so one way or the other, we don't have, we're, we're misusing those resources. I heard that they don't know how they're going to pay for the electricity. I definitely heard there's not going to be a fire station, which is ridiculous. The thing that really bothers me is I'm not from that area. I'm from South Reno, and that's where they're building this Talis project, and they're building it on a swamp, on a marsh, you know? And I'm thinking, those people who buy those houses are going to have problems in the future. Why are they building it on a swamp or a marsh? It's because there's no more land in this area. And so this Cold Springs area, I've been out there, it's beautiful, and it's a wonderful opportunity for another community, and we're just going to throw that out the window? I don't get it. So that's, that's what I have to say. I hope that you will consider long and hard. The population is going to grow, I heard they're saying 20,000 people. By 2050, it's going to be 117,000 more people are going to be here. Again, I'm using ChatGPT to find out all of this information, but we have to plan better, and this is just prime property, so we don't have to go into BLM, okay? So let's use it for houses. Thank you.
Cindy DeFabian.
First of all, I kind of take offense to Mr. Smith's comment about the fact that we will have very little traffic along the freeway because everybody will be working across the freeway, and that's not true. A lot of the people in our community are nurses and doctors. There's no hospital across the freeway. People work at casinos downtown. They work at manufacturing places all over the valley. So all of that is not going to be supplied by a data center or whatever little things you're going to be doing or to apply. So 8,000 something jobs, that's really a ridiculous amount. The only way I can see that happening is the construction crews who are going to be building all that stuff. Once that's done, there's no jobs other than the 50 people possibly, or 10, working at the data center. So I know you're all excited about providing jobs and you get all teary-eyed and stuff about it, but it's, it's not going to vaporize. I mean, it's not going to materialize. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Tom Tabor.
I'm Tom Tabor. I don't really have a dog in this hunt because I don't reside in the North Valleys, but I have been around for almost 50 years working in the political world in Washoe County with the state as well and mostly with the city of Reno. There's a lot of questions that I have that I didn't hear any comments on. In fact, one person, just a few people back, mentioned something about runoff. That's the first time I've ever heard anybody say anything about runoff, but if you've been around here long enough, you remember when Sparks used to flood fairly regularly because they covered the areas along the river with concrete, asphalt, so forth. So my question is, a home occupies a certain amount of square feet of land, just the outline of the home, but you usually have a front yard and a backyard, side yards, and that allows absorption of water, either snow runoff or rain or, or other, I was going to say sleet, but I haven't seen sleet around here in a long time. So, but what I'm trying to get at is, industrial areas have very large parking areas for vehicles and for, to and from warehouses. The warehouses themselves, if you're talking about 50,000 square feet, that covers a lot more area that will not absorb water. So what I'm trying to get at is, where the devil is the water going? Is it going into White Lake? Is it going someplace else? Or has anybody planned to disperse it elsewhere? Or how are you going to use it? Because you're really cutting the absorption capability of recharging. I haven't heard anything about sewage, and yet Swan Lake is a prime example of what goes on sometimes with sewage. So I don't know whether there's going to be another sewage plant put together or you're going to have another connection to another sewage plant, or you're just going to use septic tanks out there. But I think these are some of the things that the commission should look at. These folks have done a great job of putting together some discussion for you and providing you some facts, but how about taking a look at little things like runoff and flood because of runoffs, because you're going to create a flooding situation that's greater than what's there now. I guarantee you that. Thank you very much. I appreciate every one of you because not many people take the time to take positions such as you have, or these people behind me here have taken the time to become part of the political status of this community.
Kate Wait, for the record. I just wanted to say first that I am very impressed with how this agenda item has unified the community. I've been to a lot of meetings for my job in Washoe County, and never have I seen so many people unified on an issue from all different backgrounds and on, from both sides of the aisle. With that said, I don't think that's a good thing because it shows that everyone in the community is upset about this, and I've been here for a while, just like everyone else, and no one's had anything good to say about this agenda item. So with that, I want you to strongly, I want to strongly encourage you to vote no on this agenda item. I also want to say thank you for your time. I know this isn't the most fun thing to do on a Monday night, and a lot of people would rather be with their families right now. So thank you for that, and thank you for everyone who spoke. I also wanted to note that on your website, it says that, it says, "Because how we grow matters, and the way we grow in this particular issue is the utmost importance, and we should prioritize our families and our community over industries, and we should priorities, prioritize keeping our land beautiful rather than destroying it with another industry that isn't going to have long-term benefits to our community." So thank you very much.
All right, we have four more public commenters via Zoom who would like to present, so we're going to be letting them in as panelists for their three minutes, and then, yeah, we'll get through the last four. So up next, we have Marlene Lockard.
My name is Marlene Lockard, and I'm here to ask for your denial of this agenda item tonight. This whole process, I don't think, has been fair to all of you. Why won't the developers tell us what they're going to do with the property? It is no secret that they want to build a training center. And if they had come clean and told officials what they planned use is, all of the questions and all of your expert planners could have found findings on a change in the master plan that included a data center. To say there is no linkage between this master plan change and data centers is naive. It is exactly what this is all about. And if you approve this tonight, it will send it back to the city council that did not adopt guidelines purposely to approve data centers, and that's a whole new ballgame for them. And so it's another way to work around the planning and approval process, and it's not fair to all of you to put you in this position tonight. And I had so much to say earlier, and it's all by the wayside, that I would like to encourage you that do not make this decision, please, in a vacuum. There are 12 data centers approved or under development in the tri-industrial park. Your regional planners, Story County and the water use there and the water use for Nevada in northern Nevada, what happened at Lake Mead last summer, this is one state, and we have finite water. And water, there's a ton more to be said about that, but, and I'm cutting short all the stuff, but I do want to say I'm distressed that during your break, a gentleman commissioner on your panel was vocally speaking about his frustration with all of this because they weren't linked and because he was frustrated that the same people here opposed housing, then they opposed this, they opposed everything. And therefore, I hope he's not making his decision tonight based on his frustration with the citizens and not on the merits or demerits of the proposal in front of him. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mary Lou Yocum. Okay, we'll move on and we'll come back to Mary if she's able to, and move on to Manny Becerra.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Manny.
Great, fantastic. Good evening, Chair of Commissioners and Staff. For the record, this is Manny Becerra, fellow Reno Planning Commissioner. I submitted written comments ahead of tonight's meeting, consistent with my on-the-record remarks at both municipal and regional levels. I do echo the concerns and opposition raised by others this evening, particularly as it relates to the required findings under Policy RC9. These include clear deficiencies in regional coordination, public services and facilities, and natural resource planning. I also support calls for stronger safeguards, such as retaining the PUD to ensure tangible community and infrastructure benefits, including but not limited to fire and safety services, not just in the short term, but for the long-term viability of the region. I also want to respectfully note concern about a fellow commissioner's recent hot mic remarks during recess, which came across as minimizing public input and suggested a decision may have already been made before tonight's full presentation and public record were available. At the very least, it's a reminder of why such deliberations, especially on high-stake projects like this one, belong in the open where they can be heard by all. And for what it's worth to the applicant and others, if this project is not approved tonight for clear and well-documented reasons, it's not the last bite at the apple for them to try to make things better and within regional conformance down the road. Thank you so much for the consideration and have a good evening. Thank you so much for the consideration, and have a good evening.
Okay, I think we have Mary now unmuted. Mary, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You can go ahead and give your public comment now.
Okay, I concur with the hope that you will vote no on this, but I wanted to add one specific thing that I had not heard about, discuss, and that is there is already an industrial warehouse agreement between South Avenue and South Reno Parkway Boulevard that is approximately thousands of square feet of warehouses that's already been approved, and that will add tremendous truck traffic that will be going on to 395. And I have not heard anybody say that, and it was approved by Washoe County. So I think that's something that you have to consider. And the other thing is, I just hope you realize that you are fundamentally changing the makeup or the character of Cold Springs, and you're forcing residents who really don't want this to live beside industrial development. And I think that is really sad. Thank you.
Okay, last request thus far that we have to speak is from Teri Meister.
Hello, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, hello, my name is Teri Meister, and I am concerned with what has been stated since the beginning of all of this, since the initial onset of the proposals. It was initially proposed that we were going to have an actual community building up in Cold Springs, which was taken away. And it is continually changed into where we are now being transformed into an industry. Our natural beauty, our environmental appeal is all going away if this is approved, which is why I implore you to say no to this proposal. We are not even looking at the environmental and sewage impacts that are going to be created with this industry coming in. And it is industry. There is no community resources. There aren't, I mean, the housing is so minimal, and it's exactly what we need in our area. I heard that the sewage system for some of this industry is going under White Lake. How is that even feasible or possible for it to be like that? That is going to cause such an environmental biohazard when we get White Lake flexing and getting consumed with water. If there is a sewage system underneath White Lake, how are we not going to get the environmental impacts of that? And it's going to be in our community. All of the area over by the gas station and so on is going to be impacted by whatever biohazards are created from that. And then we're talking about substations and other things being created in our area, yet we're not putting in the fire or the police stations or anything to take care of the impacts that are going to be created environmentally from those things. We just had three fires in our area. 395 was shut down for a certain amount of time. You're talking about industry that's going to create more trucks and more issues. We already have trucking issues on 395 near Red Rock. It's a wind tunnel. We are never going to be able to get out of our area if those things aren't looked at and reviewed. We will be trapped here. You guys are not looking at the full picture and not getting all the environmental impact reports and such. This is a bunch of fluff that we are being given, and it is totally... I just can't see how we can be blindsided by this. Thank you for your time. I appreciate all of you.
That is all of the public comment requests we have received thus far.
All right. Well, if that's all the public comment, then we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion. Does anybody have any discussion on this matter? Who wants to go first?
What? Yeah, I'll kick it off. I feel very passionate about this particular item. I can't make the findings for Public Services and Facilities due to not having information about the pending Cold Springs, Tamoa, and WRWC study. And I'm also very concerned about nullifying a Reno Fire Development Agreement that was in place under the current PUD in light of three fires this week in that area. And I also just want to acknowledge the community has come out twice in this particular planning process, and they came out many times in the Reno Planning Process. The community has been consistently clear with what they want. And that might be contrary to my fellow Reno Planning Commissioner's hot mic conversation during the break. But I want to be really clear that for years, they have emphasized that they want housing and they want general commercial. And I think that's really something to respect, that even the councilwoman from that ward has come to two of these meetings to talk about this particular vision not being the right fit. And that needs to be respected. The last PUD took several years to come up with a plan, many workshops, many community engagement processes. None of that was, investment was put into this vision. And we're getting it, and we're getting it time and again with no changes and no added details. So in light of forthcoming potential data center standards, the fact that the studies are complete by Tamoa, who may be connected into to make this project happen, there's absolutely no way I can make the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, happy to go next. Thank you. I think the comments about the hot mic were comments I made, and I feel very comfortable with what I said on the break. I ended my discussion with a fellow commissioner commenting that I think it'd be beneficial if the city gave a training to the public to help the public better address their arguments to the findings that we are required to make. And part of my frustration was that it's difficult to parse through some of the statements made by the public and attach them to specific findings when there's not sufficient evidence. So I stand by the statements I made in the break, and that was a part of my discussion, was that it'd be helpful if there were trainings, and I do stand by that to the public. As far as the specific findings that we're supposed to make, I think the most helpful graphic that we've seen tonight is Table 2 in the packet. And Jeremy went over this in depth, and his version, his presentation, was a little bit distinct from the version in the packet. But ultimately, it goes through a lot of the things that we're supposed to look at. When we look at the public utilities and resources, what is being proposed, and the analysis done by our staff, shows that there is a decrease in the percentage of use. There's less sewage, less water, less traffic, less student population, and more employment. I think based on what's being proposed, I can make the findings because I'm seeing this as a more beneficial use. And looking specifically at the findings we're required to make, I can find public facilities. I can see that natural resources are taken care of. I think this is consistent with regional coordination. And I think this does accommodate population growth. I think there's an assumption that if we say no, housing gets built. But this was a project that was proposed however many years ago and hasn't been built. There's clearly something that's not working. So I think it's really important that we look at what's actually happening now, which is that there's no housing being built, and the possibility for there being housing. And that's why I can make the finding as it relates to population growth, because it's not just housing, it's access to jobs. So I, you know, I think there's been a lot of public comments that are geared towards data centers. And the last thing about this I want to just throw out there is I, I've been trying to think of a parallel for this. And I think the best parallel is if we had a stadium project in front of us, and public comment were, well, we don't want to have, we don't want to have there be concerts at the stadium. But simultaneously, there were an ordinance that prevented stadiums from having concerts without a public use permit or a certain type of permit. We wouldn't vote against the stadium because there could be concerts. There's another regulatory process that has to be gone through in order for there to be concerts. We would look at what the use that's allowed by right, and we'd evaluate it. Everything else, and all the comments about data centers, are things that can be considered later on. So with that, I can make the findings, and I'd be in support of this project. And I'd be interested in hearing y'all's thoughts.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I really appreciate the additional presentations from the City of Reno, the Stonegate rep, the Great Basin, and also appreciate the summary that Jeremy did. And based on what is within our purview, which is not speculation necessarily about data centers, whether they may or may not, there's also opportunity. You guys mentioned quite a bit of wanting more amenities. There are opportunities for retail restaurants and other amenities. And I think building industrial enabled those sorts of amenities. And I don't think it's going to be as bad as you really, as it's going to be. And I, for one, can meet all of the conditions, and I support approving this project.
Go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner Flick. Well, with all due respect to my colleagues, I find it difficult to make findings for all of the requirements, namely, three, the Public Services and Facilities, and number four, the Natural Resources. I think that granted, the data centers have sort of come on center stage, but there are other amenities that, under the existing zoning or amendment and the PUD, that include fire stations, police stations, and so on, as has been testified here tonight. Transportation. I know that there's, the way this thing is structured is that either the roads are already built or they're planned to be built, but nobody says when they're going to be built. And it's, and it's, it's not prudent to approves an amendment of this size on your road structure that isn't there. All you're going to do is create a traffic jam. And I get the argument, well, we don't know when we're going to get the funding, and so on and so forth. Well, that should say something, too. I'm in favor of not approving it and leaving the zoning or the amendment as is.
Thank you. Jeremy Smith for the record. I just wanted to address our criteria and the findings for public facilities and services. It does not include public safety. Our five areas of public facilities and services that the state law enables us to consider are potable water, wastewater, stormwater and flood, transportation, and schools. And that's available in Policy PF1, where we have a region-wide standards table for those things, which we implemented, which were, you know, that is, that is one of the things that has been on the table. For example, you have to meet those criteria in that table, PF1, or create a feasibility analysis showing how they are met. In this case, through our previous presentation at the meeting before and in our staff report, we've shown how those findings are met. I'm happy to answer any further questions about that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Did that make sense?
Commissioner Kramer, I have listened to all the public comment. I appreciate all the presentations that were made. I understand why the project was changed from more residential to industrial. And I understand that because I personally went through building a home in 2021, when in 2018 was when I wanted to build it and couldn't. And the cost of that house went up significantly. Built the house anyways. But I understand the cost of building is tremendous now, especially residential. Industrial is cheaper to build, and I get that. But looking at the narrow scope of which we can decide on this project, none of that matters. This entire region is suffering from a housing crisis. All the entities know that. And all are working towards finding a solution to help with that housing crisis, to figure out what affordable housing is to everyone. I can make all the findings in this and keep my personal feelings out of it because they don't matter in this situation. I agree with what Commissioner Velto said. I agree with what Commissioner Reed said. We are looking, it doesn't, just because this project is approved does not give them carte blanche to do whatever they want. They still have a process for which to go through. And the City of Reno is the avenue for which they have to go through. So if those regulations are not acceptable, then it is up to the governing board at the City of Reno, which is the city council, to take that on. It is not up to us to take that on. It is up to the City of Reno to make sure that they conform with what their standards are. So I am in favor of this project moving forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Dan.
Commissioner Lazarewski, I'd like to thank everybody who came here tonight. A lot of people put a lot of time and energy into understanding this project, this proposal, and bringing it to us. This is an incredibly frustrating project because if this were, if the City of Reno had never annexed this in 2005, it would be coming before the Washoe County Planning Commission, where I would argue it should have been to start with because these kind of hodgepodge annexations out into the world really screw up our regional planning. But that is not the, not the scope in front of us, and that's not a choice that I can go back and make for posterity. And listening to the findings, just the titles of the findings that we have to make, it seems super straightforward that there's no way. Like, they're cutting out 73% of the housing. Housing is the only one of our regional goals that gets its own, like, headline finding that we have to make. And they're really throwing away a lot of the housing. And that housing is always the reason that stuff comes before us, and they say, well, you've just got to, you've got to ignore that it's in a floodplain. We'll mitigate. You've got to ignore that it's a closed basin because what we really need is the housing, the housing, the housing. Nobody can afford to live here anymore. And that's true. But the, the policy that we have under making the housing finding is ensure the provision of necessary services to support and resources to support projected growth in population, employment, and housing. And that's not maximizing the number of affordable units on any given project before you. It's not do the absolute best that you can do. It's not even a specific, like, this threshold gets you approval, this threshold doesn't. So I hate saying that a project that removes 8% of the entire projected Tier 2 housing growth in the next 25 years and removes 73% of the housing that they fought to get approved for years over the objection of a lot of people, meets... for years over the objection of a lot of people meets the population housing goals of this body, but looked at on the grounds that we're allowed to look at it, which is, does it provide necessary services and resources to support projected growth in population, employment, and housing? I mean, this project doesn't alone support projected growth in population, employment, and housing, and this change doesn't remove the regional capacity to support that. So I could go through the way that, like, if this were before the Washoe County Planning Commission, I would not agree that it has a good development form. Putting the housing as the wildland urban interface buffer for a bunch of concrete tilt-up warehouses, that seems like a really bad form, but that's a City of Reno scope to review. That was part of what the City of Reno Planning Commission couldn't find consensus on approving, and the City of Reno Council did find a majority in support of. And this board is not an appeals board for the City of Reno. It's a separate review scope for very specific and very constrained regional conformance in some ways that are extremely imprecisely defined, but that's what our legislative mandate is. So over my tremendous frustrations, I can make these findings.
Anybody else?
I'll keep this short, Commissioner Jacaman, since everyone's already spoken by and large. My comments in the City of Reno Planning Commission meeting, my question there largely focused around whether or not the infrastructure that would be built as a result of this approval would seed the ability for other types of development to occur. When staying within the purview of what we're supposed to do on this body, obviously, my questions here have focused around flooding, which is a chief and primary concern within these watersheds in North Valleys. Flooding is always of, in the forefront when it comes to my mind for what's going on up there. Recently, obviously, as we heard from the City of Reno and confirmed by Washoe County, there are codes in place that encourage development to not just mitigate their impacts with regard to flooding, but also improve, so increase the retain, the retained water on site. So hearing that this project will allow the residents, the Washoe County residents that currently reside within the floodplain north of White Lake is something that makes me encouraged to see where this project might go. As a result of that, I will be in support of this project.
This is Rob for the record. I support Kerry's decision to not approve this, and I'm going to base it upon RF 11 compatibility and the transportation factor on that. It very clearly calls out that it requires local government master plans with an S to address land use compatibility. And based upon the City of Reno's own words, they do not look at Washoe County master plan. They do not consider that in their considerations. And so with that said, the public facility services, I'm concerned about flooding. If you go down 395, they're building that beautiful new freeway going south. If you get off of Virginia Street, right behind that retaining wall, is one of those ponds that's supposed to hold the water, and it's supposed to let it go out as it gets to a certain height. Well, we haven't had rain in a long time, and that pond, that little retaining thing is full, and it's still full. So that concerns me with the flooding out in the north, out in Cold Springs. The transportation factor, once again, we were misled by Wood Rogers. They said that there would be no use of side roads, and that's not the case. When they had an arrow pointing from Cold Springs to the airport, there is side roads there. And then there's no regional coordination, once again. There's no looking at the Washoe County Master Plan, the Invision 2040, which you have to pass, go through Washoe County to get to Reno. And if they're not going to consider anything with Washoe County's master plan, I can't support this, because there's no road going straight to Reno unless you go through the county. You have to have regional coordination, so I cannot support this plan. Anybody else?
Go ahead. Commissioner Nieberlein for the record. I'm not going to take a lot of time. My position on this echoes much of what the chairman just said, and also Commissioner Romeyer. I really, I have the biggest problem with the natural resources finding. I found out when we had this meeting last time, before it was continued, that Tamoa was conducting a study on what was going to be the effect of growth on water in this entire area. And as a person that looks at a lot of details before I make decisions, I find it irresponsible to make a decision tonight, not knowing what that study encompasses, what the scope of it is, what they're looking at, if there's any preliminary findings that we may be able to use that could help us in making this determination tonight. And for that reason, I can't support this this evening.
Thank you. Would you like to do a roll call vote? Ms. Jessica?
Yes. Well, we'll make.
Mr. Chairman, Jessica Prenti, for the record. I think we might need a motion first.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, make a motion.
I will make a motion. I move to find the Stonegate Heinz Ranch Amendment to the City of Reno Master Plan in conformance with the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Velto, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you like to do a roll call vote?
Can you do that?
Brow Pierce.
I vote no.
Marilyn Kramer.
Yes.
Michael Flick.
No.
David Jacaman.
Yes.
Kerry Ror Meyer.
No.
Carl Nieberlein.
No.
Dan LaSorewski.
Yes.
Shelley Reed.
Yes.
And Alex Velto.
Yes.
Five, motion fails.
Chairman Smith, the record. We need six yay votes for that motion to pass, and we only got five.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Jessica Prenti, for the record. Given the denial of the Master Plan Amendment conformance by this body, there is an opportunity for an objection to be filed by the applicant, and it comes back to this body for its final decision. My recommendation is that this body not take a vote on the project of regional significance at this time, and wait until we have the objection back, which I'm sure is going to be made.
Okay. All right. So we close that and move on to the next one. So it's my understanding that the next ones may be postponed, moved on. So I'd like to open up B and give it to Jessica for further words.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is now 10 o'clock. We are four hours into this meeting. I've been on legal counsel for almost.
Everybody, can you guys please be quiet? We're still in a meeting. Thank you.
Been legal counsel for almost 10 years. It's the longest meeting yet. There's a lot more business to be taken care of. My understanding is staff has reached out to all of the staff for the, on the underlying plans that are coming forward for conformance review with our updated plan. Everyone has consented to having them continued to the next meeting. So we would need a motion for a member of this body to continue items.
Commissioner Lazarewski.
B through F to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Ms. Reno, I'll make a, oh, I'll make a motion to continue items B through F for our next meeting, or whenever we want to continue these.
Yeah, till next time. Commissioner Lazarewski, I second the motion to continue to our next meeting. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Thank you. Moving on, I'm number six, reports. Do we have any member or director of reports?
This is Jeremy Smith, the record. Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Nothing, nothing. Okay, next regional meeting is August 28th, right here. Legal counsel report.
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Request for future agenda items. I would like to sometime in the near future, take a look at the industrial lands analysis. Last time it was done was 2013. So I would request that we take a look at that sometime soon. Okay, anybody else? All right, moving on, we'll open up public comment. Last public comment.
We have one more. Megan Ebert.
Megan Ebert, for the record, this is just continuation of what I didn't get to say earlier. In reference to schools, which is part of your purview, I wanted to share that during the 22-23 school year, Alice Smith Elementary School, O'Brien, I'm sorry, Alice Smith Elementary School, O'Brien Middle School, North Valleys High School, and Desert Skies Elementary School all were redistricted to bus kids to other schools because they had exceeded capacity. I also wanted to mention that the Matter Academy that was approved by council is currently in a lawsuit with the Washoe County School District, I believe. I'm not sure. Maybe Mr. Velto has more information on that, but I don't know when or if that school's going to happen. It's supposed to be K through high school with a Boys and Girls Club, which would be wonderful, desperately needed in the community, but don't know when or if that's going to happen. The North Valleys High School is currently at 99% capacity. It's technically in county land. It's the only high school. I believe Ward 4 is the only ward that does not have a high school in it, so just wanted to make sure I get that information regarding schools on the record. Information about the redistricting, you can look online. There's a quote from Beth Smith regarding, you know, when the effect will go, or when it'll go into effect. But that was for the 22-23 school year when it started. O'Brien Middle School's only been open for two school years. It's already at 86% capacity. Forgive me if I already said that. It's a long night. Also, just with regards to roads and water infrastructure, these types of developments that could potentially happen at this site, I know it's continued, we're not doing it right now, but the types of developments that could happen here all qualify for tax abatements through the GOAT Office. So we're talking about development paying for itself, and these can qualify for tax abatements. So we need the money at the City of Reno and the county to pay for services, to pay for roads, to pay for infrastructure, for development to pay for itself. And when there's tax abatements, it makes it very difficult for us to provide services. I've asked the City of Reno Finance Department to give me analysis of how many tax abatements we currently have within the City of Reno, and how that's impacting our ability to provide services, but we don't currently know that. That's an unknown factor, and that's not something we've seen in any presentation. And I also would like to call out, this last Assembly Session at the Legislature, Story County brought forward a bill to roll back some of these tax abatements that are offered through the state, because it's affecting their ability to provide services. Story County has a population of 4,000 people. We need to pay attention and see them as the canary in the coal mine. This is what could happen to us, and you cannot act like this project is in a vacuum. This is Reno. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
That is all.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned.
Written correspondence.
Oh, written correspondence. 10:05. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.